Welcome to the Etna Township Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Tuesday, February 15, 2022, 6:00 PM. I call this meeting to order. Mr. Johnson, the invocation, please.
All right. State of my heart, that's with me. Thank you for tonight and for this day you've given us and the people here in our township. I pray that you be with those who protect us, who serve us, who take care of us, and that you be with them and with their families as they miss them when they are away. Amen.
Please call me in pledge allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. McKee?
Here.
What's here? Adoption of the agenda. I would move to adopt the agenda with an addition, under motion to pay bills, the various resolutions and motions submitted by the fiscal officer regarding the invoices and purchase orders. Is there a second?
Second, but I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so Mr. Johnson, second discussion. The fiscal officer introduced some resolutions for purchase orders using, I believe it was electronically. She's going to discuss that later, but I wanted to add that to the agenda.
Oh, sure, that discussion of the...
Of the, yeah, the motions and the resolutions.
Okay.
With that, so when she deals with that.
That's right.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
All right. So, adoption of meeting minutes. I move to adopt the meeting minutes of January 18, 2022, and January 24, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. The one discussion I'd like to say is this was presented at another meeting. I properly thought I had reviewed these on the laptop, and that's when I moved to approve the minutes. I realized that error, so I reintroduced these onto this meeting agenda so I could properly approve these. And what I'm going to correct that from now on, we're not going to do anything on the computer. Everything's going to be printed right here. Any other discussion or corrections to the minutes? They're being done. Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Those are approved. Public comments. As I said before, now we're allowing up to five minutes, public comments. If anybody wishes to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and just let us know what's on your mind.
Come on, people. Chuck Bundy, 10254 Tolgate Road. I would like to know if you can comment on the pros and cons of Etna incorporating, because Reynoldsburg is right there, Reynoldsburg seems to be encroaching, and I just think it would be a good thing for the trustees to consider. It's all I have.
And just to quickly reply, it's one of the options I've been looking at even as a candidate. I think we should keep our options open. We do have an annexation agreement with Reynoldsburg right now where they're limited. That may be challenged. We're going to have our attorney defending that, but that is something that I think we should always keep in mind.
It's a viable option to incorporate.
It may be. The only thing is you bring a lot more responsibility in here where you've got your own police. So it's a trade-off. So I think when the time comes, maybe we should present that and have a full discussion on it.
Quickie Helsel, 9646 Linds Road. I'm wanting to speak about the wall behind our house that isn't really a wall. We still have problems back there. They never finished what they were supposed to do. We have water. We have ponds in our backyard where they were supposed to connect our lawns to the drainage that they put back there, and they never did it. And we also have lights still shining through our windows, and it shines all the way through my house. It shines through other people's bedroom windows. And come summertime, I like to leave my windows open because I don't want air conditioning. And that's going to prevent me from opening my windows because I have to open my curtains too. And we just want some of this resolved, fixed, because they were supposed to do something better than what they've done. How's that?
Just quickly on that, too. I am working with Dan Harrington and Chris Conley with Spinel and their attorney to address those issues, because there are some, there's been some confusion on what their obligations were. So I've been working closely with that and hopefully we can get resolutions. I'll keep you up to date.
Yes, sir. Yeah, hi. Justin Yarne, 9782 Linds Road. I was last at the zoning variance change meeting that was held before the building, the FedEx building was constructed. They requested a zoning variance, and I spoke at that meeting, and I think the board denied the variance, and then the prior trustees overrode them. And so I wanted to come tonight to echo what Vicki just had to say. You know, in that variance meeting, I talked about how the patch of woods, the five-acre patch of woods that's behind my house between Linds Road and the FedEx building is diseased with ashworm's disease. And, you know, even in the part of the summer when there are the most leaves on the trees, you can see through the woods. And then now that it's winter and there are no leaves on the trees, the patch of woods is basically non-existent. And so there are 24/7 bright lights constantly shining in my backyard. And, you know, like Vicki said, I think there was supposed to be a 20-foot fence, at least that's what I heard, you know. I think the fence that's there now is probably closer to 10-foot. You know, I don't know why they have to have the lights on constantly. Like, why can't they put motion-sensored lights up? Why can't they plant some trees in my backyard or on their side of the fence that stand taller than the fence? You know, it felt like the whole township was here for that variance meeting, you know, people talking about having lived here their whole lives. And, you know, I think the board heard what everyone had to say, but for some reason, you know, the trustees were willing to put profits above our privacy. And I'd just like to communicate my frustration with the fact that even with my blinds down, I don't have a dark bedroom at night. Thank you.
On that, I'd just like to say that I am working with the builder to try and get a solid line of giant green arborite that grow up to 30-foot on either side. One of the issues is they thought they didn't have to put anything in that heat foot section. Mr. Singleton said that's where it's required. They said they can't because the drainage there. And so they're looking at options of putting it on their side, putting it on the homeowner's property, giving them some allowance to do what they want. So trying to work with them to do that. So trying to find some resolution. But I do understand that wall is in a valley. I've been out there several times, and you just look over at those workhorses with those strip LED lights just shine right on the back of those houses. So if we can try and get that. They've talked about, I've asked about shielding, changing some lights, changing. So I'm putting some pressure on them, and as soon as I hear back, I'll definitely keep you. I've been keeping Vicki up to date. I can let you know, too.
Thank you.
Scott?
My name is Bill Black with 13398 Palmer Road. Two quick things. First, I wanted to thank all three of you trustees for the openness and transparency and how you accessibility, I guess you would say, as evidenced here by all the people that are here. We appreciate all that you're doing. I know there's struggles and so forth, but I appreciate it, and I'm sure I echo that, besides everybody here. Second, the other question, a friend who lives in Royal Acres who couldn't be here tonight asked if he knew what was going on on the east side of Mink, just north of Maine, I think south of, I think it's south of Amazon. There's apparently some preparation building. Do you know anything about what's going on there?
Is that the new 4-5 there? That's the new warehouse, 4-5 that was previously built.
And who's it for?
I don't know the tenant. I don't think they have a tenant right now. I mean, they haven't announced. When I do find out, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
My name is Judith Gurnett. I live at 370 Cunningham Apple Place. The boarding boxes are on the agenda tonight, but I wanted to just give a little background on that. There's three blessing boxes in Pataskala, and a blessing box is an outdoor cabinet stocked with non-perishable food items. Items are anonymously donated and anonymously received. Leave what you can, take what you need. We basically need to start, if we decide to do this with Etna, we need to get a place to build this box. It needs to be in shade and a safe area where someone can pull up to put things in or take them out. I'm offering to help keep it cleaned or stocked. And one in four children in central Ohio go to bed hungry at night, and I just felt like Etna can do their small part in helping with that. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Yes, I placed on the agenda, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. I've got some information after we decide to task the mayor to update blessing boxes. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Paula Dillon. I'm of the 84 Hawthorne Drive. I'm sorry, Paula, your last name? Dillon. Okay, thank you. Okay. So I just kind of wrote this down. This is kind of about the snow plowing and warehouses. So I wrote, Etna has grown up a lot since 1991 when we moved here. We've been saddened to see farmland and open spaces gobbled up by warehouses and endless new subdivision. Road widths have had to be expanded in addition to seeing warehouses everywhere. We see big trucks going up and down the road with all the time to new warehouses. And then with Intel being built nearby New Albany, within the next few years, our roads will have to be expanded even more as a route from Intel to I-70. That will see a lot more growth in the near future. So, so turning to the recent ice and snowstorm, as I was walking my dog through the neighborhood, I encountered my neighbors down the street shoveling out the driveway, and the road in front of their driveway said they could get in their driveway. The plow had not even been through our subdivision. It was the end of the afternoon on the second day of the storm. Cars had been getting stuck all day, and I remember thinking that I hope nobody has a help emergency, because they wouldn't be able to get through the subdivision. Since I knew that my neighbor worked for Etna Township, I asked him what was going on with the lack of plowing, not only for this storm, but the previous two storms of the year. To be fair, the plow did come through at 11:15 that night, and also came very late for the first storm, but not at all for the second smaller storm. The neighbor told me that he quit his job because he got tired of the politics. Since I was walking my dog, it was pretty cold out. He was busy shoveling. I didn't ask him what he meant by that, and I just moved on with my dog. But talking to somebody else in a nearby subdivision a few days later, well, I don't begin, I was just hearing that there was some infighting going on among the trustees, and two of them seem to be siding up against another. I don't know if this is true or not. I certainly hope this is not true. The community needs the trustees to work together. So in conclusion, I would like to say the community needs and deserves for all three trustees to put aside differences or alliances with past trustees, swallow pride, whatever, work together to make Etna the best it can be. This is what we elected for. We expect that, and we hope that it happens, and we're counting on you to do that so we can move Etna forward in a responsible manner. Thank you, Paula. I appreciate that.
And I'll just snow follow you that a little bit later on the agenda.
Yeah.
Randy Heine, 10293 Smoke Road. This is not as big as the warehouses and snow removal, but on Smoke Road north of 70, there's a dip. The other day I was up there, and somebody hit that dip, and they just about lost control. And then, I don't know, it was about three or four weeks ago, there was a bad accident up there, because where the 70 and the two blacktops come together, there's that much of a dip. And when he hit that dip, he went up in there and he slammed right down into the trees, almost went down in the ditch. And if you can, please look at it, because somebody's going to get hurt or killed right there.
I am looking at when you contact me for it, because that's on the north side of that and when you come through.
I want to pick Ben at 40 also.
What, where at?
3 Ben at 40.
Oh, yeah.
My husband just hit that the other day. I was in the car. I wasn't paying attention to it. He went. Off he went. They're on the roof.
Sarah Ferguson at 43 Bowman Road. Is there a maximum light, like brightness, or however you pronounce it, to where they can only have a certain brightness on their lights on the exterior? Is that thought about? Is that something that... I haven't talked to them yet. I want to email them, but I know, like, the Blue Moon Place.
Yep.
I think there's at least once a week, I almost miss my turn right there on Bowman, because I just am so focused on the lights right there. I mean, I'm going to email them on the left, no, but I just didn't know if that, with the FedEx, you know, properties, is that something like they could institute on the zoning is a maximum light brightness? Another question is with the warehouse, that's going to be discussed with the Reynoldsburg annexation. So just the pure number of tractor-trailers coming scares me. I have a kid who's going to be driving age in like two years, and just him, the thought of him like being in a small little car around all these big giant tractor-trailers, like rushing to get to their end destination. I mean, that kind of scares me as a mom in insurance agency. You think about the worst-case scenario. So on top of that, there are, I see at least once or twice a day, especially at night when I want to pick my kids up from the high school, that there are people just running red lights to turn left onto like Etna Parkway or into the Amazon warehouses. They are running, like turning left on those red lights, because they don't feel like waiting on the plates to turn. So I see that at least once or twice a day. The other thing is with that, if they decide to put the warehouse in or whatever, is there going to be any type of drainage that's going to be, like, what's the normal procedure if they bring large warehouse in, like, to the drainage around the spreading communities? Do they help out with that? Is that something that's thought about? Because I know mine at least, but we have stinking water all the time, and mosquitoes are terrible in the summer, so.
Quickly with the light pollution, we do have a part of zoning where it needs to be shielded, and at the property line of 0.
Sometimes it's the lighting of the car.
Yeah, well, they're protecting the zoning, so there should be, I can address that. Our zoning inspectors are health and medical right now. We've got assistance working, but...
Yeah, I was going to email them, too, but I was just thinking on the lines of...
And then the annexation, we'll be dealing with that, but that's, we've got an annexation agreement with Reynoldsburg. They're limited to so many properties. This is not one. So it appears that there may be a challenge to it. We're going to defend that, so that should not happen. And they are proposing warehouses there. I'm not a fan of that. And then as far as if there was something built, typically you do have to, you can't make things worse with your energy. They're probably approved, but again, I'd be just warehouses. Then red lights, I don't know, if you guys here, what you've noticed?
We try to patrol that area. Any complaints like that, we'd love to know about. We can give us places to sit and monitor that stuff. I know I've sat down in the new 4-5 building in South Gate and monitored that one. That one had a traffic light issue. I sat there 10, 20 minutes, and that one's going to be directed to ODOT specifically to relieve that issue.
Okay. And also with the Intel property coming, like, I would be, I don't know how it feels, but like, I know housing is going to be a huge demand for people. So like, I don't know if working with the school board or working, you know, with the community and developers to bring in more houses, you know, that's something I would like to see rather than a warehouse.
Definitely, yeah. We're going to have to work on that. And one of my things is we have to work all together with all entities to figure out how we're going to develop this area, especially with the district of roads, schools, sewer. That's a big one, too.
I mean, we're, what, 15 minutes from the new Intel, so.
My name is Bruce Henick, 133 Reader Court. Just a couple of quick questions. Why are we building warehouses that we don't even know who's going to occupy them when we have one sitting on Main Street in Dayton? Who's going to occupy the one just south of 310? Do we know?
The one south.
The one that's being built just south of the freeway.
Next to Loves.
No, next to Loves. Who's going in there?
I'm not sure. I heard that they might have a tenant. Typically, they keep that pretty quiet, but I am concerned about the amount of warehouses. I think there should be more diversity if we have any commercial constructions that are distribution centers.
Paula took all my other thunder, so. But I do have one question. Refugee Road between 310 and Columbia, whose control is that? Yours or Pataskala?
So the north side is Pataskala, the south side is us. It's divided halfway through the roadway.
Correct. I understand.
We have adjacent jurisdiction that we can control both sides of the road. It's the main traffic stops and force laws on both sides of the road.
Okay. I understand all that. I knew that before. I'm a retired policeman. The worst thing on there, every day, I drive it, every day, that 20-mile per hour sign might go lit up, and I've never, ever, ever seen a deputy there. I've never seen a Pataskal policeman there.
Just west of 310, not from out?
Yeah, between 310 and Columbia, those cars, if you slow down to 20, you're going to get hit and the ant's in. Because I've had that, and when I go through there, I now put on my four-way flashers, because I don't trust the people behind me. So I wish you guys could spend a little time. I could care less who gets a ticket, because I work for a company right now. We transport children with disabilities, and with that, we go through those school zones, and we slow up, but, you know, you're going to get, people get hit. I haven't seen a deputy there at all, but I was concerned about that and the warehouses. But like I said, Paula took all my other thunder.
Bruce, are you talking about by Liberty Christian?
Yeah.
Right through there, okay.
Yeah, Liberty Christian, they might as well not even have these lights there. Nobody slows them. Thank you.
Is this a twin?
No, some of the other speakers remind me of a couple of things. It may be the light that the sheriff was talking about, but the stoplight at Tolgate and 40, it doesn't work, and my wife actually specifically asked me to talk about it, so if that's being addressed.
I noticed that.
That could be related to the people running the red light.
They're aware of that.
Yeah. And so then the second thing is, is my children go to Liberty Christian, and I echo what this gentleman said. And actually, every afternoon and every morning, the, what they call car line, which is the parents dropping the children off and picking them up, it actually runs, it runs from the building, the school building, down the entrance and out onto Refugee Road. And so the side of Refugee Road, actually both sides of Refugee Road, get backed up, and you have, you have parents coming in and coming out, trying to turn east and west on Refugee Road while impatient drivers are zooming through because they don't need to turn. And so, I mean, I've almost, I've almost been T-boned at least once this school year. It's my recommendation that you guys look into putting a stoplight there, because you're going to have somebody die.
Well, we'll definitely look into that, and I'll talk to Jeff Deuce about it, of course. Anybody else? Oh, RJ.
Hi, RJ Sabatino, Cumberland Trail Golf Club. Just wanted to speak about housing, like you said, ma'am. There is a great need in the township for housing. And in fact, there are nine projects approved and ready to go to build houses in the township, pending one major thing that I think Mr. Evans alluded to, sewer. Southwest Licking Water and Sewer District and the issues, lack of transparency, lack of communication about capacity and servicing the residents, servicing the township for sewer is going to, I mean, it's going to have significant negative impacts on the township, as long as we'll stay. Thank you.
And that's definitely something I'm working on with trying to resolve that sewer issue with everybody, but a lot of it's funding, and as many know, that the last board pushed through a lot of tips with the high reimbursements to the developers, and we got to look at, I mean, where the money's coming from, where it's going. So I'm going to push for a solution, because we need some development, but we got to be responsible. Mr. Duffy?
Jim Duffy, 27 Daisy Drive. Had a couple of things, but forefront right now is the traffic issues, the schools, this and that. And I see on the agenda there's a flashing light at an elementary, at the elementary. I think we've just heard people don't pay attention to anything, but if you put a flashing light up in there, they're going to be nothing. Kirkersville, a few years ago, had an officer at the Kirkersville Elementary during the peak times of kids coming and leaving, which could be an answer for it down here. So keep that in mind. Also, Southwest Licking purchased a new well field down at Kirkersville and wanted to remind me to update the well field map that was implemented back in 2015, I think. I presume that would apply to that well field, well field protection map. And I know it's kind of early to think about mosquitoes, but are we having a mosquito spray policy? In the past, it used to be you'd get attacked coming out your door, you'd call Randy Four and say, hey, mosquitoes are bad. Can you get the health department to come out and spray? Just curious if you had a thought on that.
Sure is. I'm six weeks in, still trying to dig into everything as far as mosquitoes jumped. You know anything about that? What policy?
We have the county health department.
I'll look into that.
I think you guys have to call them, because I know I had called multiple times last year to have you guys call, to have the trustees call, to have them come out and spray.
I'll look into it.
We used to call Mike Waller.
He's always been in the health department. If you guys pass him out, I can usually march his, and then if you have a blind trustee, there's a way to contact. We're going to have to let him know we're not going to happen.
We'll look into that. I think I have the policies, procedures in place, and that, so that'll be...
It's an actual contract to help.
So I'll look into that, and I'll address that issue.
Could you make like a schedule on that time?
I'll look at what's appropriate. I'll talk to if the board wants to be a point person.
There's no schedule. What the health department's going to have to do is they come out and set traps, and it's all done through their regulations, and we don't control the schedule. We just let them know where there's...
Well, I think, Sarah, if I'm not mistaken, when I spoke to you back in the summer, you guys had a ton of, I mean, a lot of mosquitoes.
I mean, we were paying our own services.
Yeah, they were paying for their own services.
Still have that issue.
So I ended up calling over here, and you took care of whatever you needed to do, within what, a day or two or a week?
Yeah, within a week, I think they were out there.
I think they're towards the end of the year, the health department, this has been the only year since I've been here, had some issues with staffing.
Okay.
But normally, they keep a, sometimes it's like a college intern, it falls through the summer, then they go back to school, and then, you know, it kind of shuts down. But this year was the only year it seemed like they had a lot of issues with getting them out there.
Okay, that's good to know.
I think they have to be certified to do that, that's why you really keep it in the health department.
Maybe I'll give you kind of like an announcement, that if you notice there's any issues, let us know sooner rather than later.
And put in contact.
Yeah, put in contact so that we can, if it's, we need to get them out sooner. You guys all right, are you doing that?
When the contract comes in, it becomes an agenda, I don't know, who's gonna be your first?
But until then, anybody else? Judy?
Judy Newman, 9630 Windsor. I'm here to address the Schenale FedEx property again. Mr. Adams, I've talked to Dan Harretson, he's been no help. I mean, my son is back there this afternoon, and the wall's already crumbled. You know, a year ago, we were standing here, and they were up here saying, we run out of 30-foot bumper, mounted through nicely landscaped, 20-foot wall. We have none of that, they put the steel posts for the wall, it's actually eight feet from our property line. Two of the steel posts are in tree trunks of 100-plus year old oak trees, so they die, I am suing. We have water issues, worse than we've ever had, and they promised us that they would put fingers into our yards to drain it. It's worse now than it's ever been. The noise, that it's not soundproof, you can hear like thunder at night, laying in bed. You can hear the trucks, the BBT, all through the day. I mean, everything that they said to us was nothing but a lie. And I think they need to be held accountable, I mean, everything that they promised, we did not get, they didn't even level down the dirt back then. There's tree roots, three inches in diameter, sticking up two feet, I can't mow that. It just, it needs to get addressed.
Like I said, I've been in contact with Dan Harrington, Chris Conley, their attorney, and pushing, I don't know, Vicky gave you the last update with that, but again, they're looking at that second building, and they want a tax incentive on that, and I told them that I would not support anything unless they deal with.
I wouldn't support anything they did, because they did nothing but lie to us.
So, I am trying to get resolution for it.
We're talking about this here.
No, I understand it affects quality of life.
Well, we can't, we're not even gonna be able to mow that, because it's just, it's all underwater.
Anybody else? We do have snacks over there too. All right, we'll close the public comments. Going, moving on to old business, I just wanted to talk briefly on the audit, because our original, maybe we called for one. I just wanna check to see if the status, and then also, my thought is, we've got a new fiscal officer. My opinion would be, we should kind of hold off wait on anything, let her kind of settle in, and then if she finds the need, proceed with the forensic audit at that time, but I don't know where we're at.
Well, actually, I spoke with Jamie, they're the folks that do our audits, and they've been doing it for, and we're in a kind of a contract with them. So it started back in 2018, so they just did the one for 2019 and '20. So our next one will be '21 and '22, but we'll do it in 2023. They do not have the expertise into do the forensic audit, so I spoke with them about that. So right now, we're just kind of on hold for that, which kind of worked out, since she said Julie, Julie, we're gonna kind of wait out and see what she can do for us as far as that.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
Okay.
And then as far as the audit, I'm not sure how much in federal funds we've spent or anything, but I know, do you know in 2021, we spent over $750,000?
On audit?
No, 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 on federal fund, anytime, if you receive an expense, $750,000, that triggers a single-year audit, so it would be the '21 and '22.
Yeah, I don't believe so, but I know.
We'll get you, all right, any other discussion? Close that. Old Business B, live streaming meetings, update, I continue to look into that currently until we do, still recording and posting. There are various systems that could be used for record retention, that can integrate live stream into, one is iCompass. School boards use, I think, Word docs or something similar to that. With the, are looking into the administrator, I was kind of holding off on determining what they might want to do, or what they might want to suggest as far as with record retention and all that, because there are integrated systems. So I don't, I don't want to move forward, get a system that's not compatible with something that we would implement in other areas. So for the time being, I'm gonna continue to do this, and then we'll move forward when we figure that out. Any other questions or discussion on that?
No.
All right, move on to C, administrator, hiring process and interview dates. I believe to date, we've got four applications and resumes submitted. Wanted to see what the board's pleasure was to begin interviewing those. If you think four is sufficient, or if you had time to review those. If so, I propose maybe a date that we could bring them all in. We could have a special meeting or a regular meeting with the executive session to interview them. And if there's more?
Cause I would see two.
There's been, Laura, we've had four. Living copy, so you can make sure you have them, but we have, we have four to date. I placed an ad in the OTA line, it'll be in the magazine, but my continuing with magazine, but that's included. I've been pushing to get the word out, hopefully everybody else is too, to get the best candidate possible. So what's the board's pleasure of, do you want to kind of move forward with this, and we can contact these individuals for an interview date?
You think we'll get more from the OTA?
It's been up for, I don't know, a week now, so I'm not sure what.
Or it was in the magazine?
No, not in the magazine, it's online.
Okay.
And I've been trying to put that out there too, so anybody, if you know anybody in government, in entities, that, you know, let's spread the word. But, and I mean, we can interview them, have them in our pocket, if we don't feel one of them is a good fit, and then continue interviewing, or. I mean, I don't know if there's a magic number, one, six, or, I mean, obviously, more the better.
Well, I know in the past, we tried, we had one of the trustees, like, pre-grooming, the people are there from, or put the resumes and stuff like that. They got the copy or four, they thought that were fully qualified, whatever, that job, and it went from there. Probably won't have four at this time, so. I'm not sure how we want to proceed with it.
What's your thoughts?
The first two I saw, I didn't, I didn't think, I interviewed one of those personally, but I think we need to, give you an interview then, really.
I'm not sure.
That's just what I saw on their resumes. Well, I looked at some of the resumes, but frankly, I still, I don't think we need an administrator right now. I, we don't, that's my thoughts, that we don't need one. We need somebody that can keep this ship afloat with economic development that's going on out here in the township. An administrator, they would be full-time, well up to $95,000 and up per year, I can't see them being here full-time. Maybe a part-time would be considered for me, but I just don't see a full-time administrator here in that township, I just don't see the need for it. So that's where I stand.
Yeah, I would strongly disagree on that, because if you, if you look at the agenda, this isn't even all items I think should have been addressed. These are items because we haven't had proper administration of the township. We, we've got employee evaluations, that the latest was 2016, and the folders were only two employees, that's administration. We have policies and procedures, we've got fireworks being, we'll discuss this, being hosted, where it doesn't appear to be a work. We, there are so many administrative issues that need to be addressed, and again, I'm spending, I, I am not working in my business. I'm putting my full efforts into dealing with the attorneys, dealing with the administration, dealing with the 629 plans, with Fred. There's a lot that administrator needs to handle, and as far as the economic development director at Pataskla is getting that served with Montrose Group at $48,000 a year. And that's, so you can have to do more, you can have to do less, and even the mayor there said, or not the mayor, I'm sorry, the administrator said, that's the way to go, because the costs are lower, if you have an economic development director, you might get it for 80, 90,000, but benefits in that, it's gonna kick it up to 100 plus. What, and for Licking County, we're a part of Licking County, $15,000 a year, they do part of that if you have different services, but are we gonna still do that for Licking County?
Licking County is a marketing organization, we can, we can get rid of that, that's $15,000 a year we're paying, okay? Second thing is, Pataskla is a city, they have a administrator and a law clerk, they have, it's different, we're township, so we're gonna run differently. So I'm not gonna compare ourselves to them. Second thing is, I'm not agreeing, disagreeing that we don't need an administrator, but I'm, pardon my, I just can't see us doing that full-time. You know, you, yeah, you talked about some of the things, I agree with you, Mark, yeah, some of the employees haven't had their yearly or their annual evaluations for years. That happens once a year, so once that happens, then it doesn't have to be for another year. But there's other things that the administrator can pick up, but it would not warrant a full-time job. And I looked over at the Ohio Township Association, and I saw the rates, they pay, they pay $95,000 a year on up, plus they want car reimbursement, $250 a month for their car, and then they also want an additional fee of a cell phone, $50 a month. So if we did something outside of that, like part-time, I can, I can consider that, I really can. But I just cannot see a full-time administrator for that now.
But I'd just like to point out that with Licking County, they would, they do provide other services that, possibly that, even as Pataskla said, that the Montrose Group does not. So I, I don't think it would be wise to leave the, leave Licking County at $15,000 for what they provide. But again, I think the way to do it would be the contract, and it wouldn't be with Montrose Group, because there would be conflict and interest there, but there's a lot of other groups for that. But I strongly, we need a full-time administrator, there are, like I said, I could have filled two pages of just the issues of policy procedures, and and I've been here six weeks of digging into this, and it's not hard to find, but it's, we don't have stormwater protection plan in place.
That's where your developer would come in, they can work with.
Stormwater protection, that's what MS4, that's, that's the soil and water, that's, economic development's not gonna be dealing with that. So, so I'm dealing with that, maybe with them tomorrow, and again, it's, there are major things just in running this township of, there's not policies, they're not. We haven't run driver abstracts on any employee.
That's right.
Driving our trucks, even hire.
Right.
But an administrator, that's why I said, even, even if, to right the ship, even if you had administrator, got it running, and then you wanted to go to part-time, like, even as, with a fiscal officer, it takes a lot of effort to right the wrong, to figure out what's going on, cause we don't even have systems set up like, we're dealing with issues of the annexation agreement, of attorney's agreement, so that, we don't have access to working files right now, we don't have, there's a lot, and I'm not sure that you're fully aware of what's going on, like I said, I've heard this listing house, so we're not here until midnight.
Well, Mark, I understand what's going on, because I see some of the emails, not all of them, that you sent out, so I do understand what's going on. But I'm not saying that we don't need an administrator, but a lot of this stuff may happen once a year, is what I'm saying, some of it, not all of it. So we can peer down some of that, some stuff may be, it may happen once a week, some stuff may happen daily, but, you know, but I just cannot justify a full-time administrator paying 95, or not, most of them want to come out with over 100,000, I'm just being conservative, at 95, I'm being conservative. Most administrative jobs are 125,000 a year. And I just cannot see that for this township, right, I'm not, I'm not saying not to do it, I'm just saying we could start in a place of a part-time. We need to go full-time, that's a consideration, would you think so, or I'm just asking.
You're not gonna get, you're not gonna get anybody qualified to do part-time.
Yeah.
And you're not gonna get anybody that will be here in a sustained fashion, part-time, once somebody retired, in my opinion. Maybe they're gonna do a couple of years, and they're gonna afford, you're not gonna have someone committed to that. And again, I, the number of hours I've spent with the attorneys on issues, and we've got more with the annexation agreement, we've got to deal with that, and with the refugee, the MOU, Pataskla, it, it's a full-time job. And I had disagreements with previous trustee, Mr. Carlisle, but I will give him one thing, he put in the hours. He was full-time acting as administrator of this township, ever since Rob Platt left in '17. To say that we can replace it with a part-time, but then you wanna hire a full-time economic development director, I think you've got that totally, let me finish, you've got that totally flipped, because we've only got so much land, so much, if you're gonna do that, why not offshore that to a consultant that can deal with it? And if you want him to deal with more, you extend that contract, if you, if we're getting too much, pare it back, but if you have a full-time person, you've got a full-time person, they're not gonna be doing any of this administrative stuff. And that's, that's what we need, and it also takes away any of the, what trustee's doing this, what trustee's over this, what trustee's, and like I said, the transition I went through was brutal, I never want to see anybody go through that again. I, when I leave the office, I would do what I can for the next person, but you're not sure of who's gonna be in the office. So with having an administrator, that puts that in place, that all that knowledge doesn't, doesn't leave, because that's what happened here. We're still, I'm still trying to figure out what's going on, I don't know what's, what went on with that fireworks, of how that even came about. Just simple things that are unsure, was very concerned about that, and there's a lot of liability out there, there's a lot, it's, you know my position, it's, we need a full-time administrator, and I think you're worried about pennies that we're sacrificing dollars on our own doing that. So do, do we want to hire or interview, or?
Yeah, what can you say, Jeff?
Again.
Cause you've been around, so you kind of know the wins and, and your experience. Mark, you know, you work your butt off, I'll say that, but there's a lot of stuff you dig into, that you take over, that you don't let anybody else do either. I know that right now, if you want it all, and you want to do it all, that's what I'm seeing, so even if we get an administrator, I just feel it's gonna be, and that's what happened with Rob Platt and John Popper, to this part. I can see if we had a, a person that was versed in economic development very well, and could do some administrator stuff too, I could do that. That's the reason I pushed those places up like that, but I think, you know, I think we need to get, a lot of the stuff that you're talking about has to be on economic development side now.
But.
That we don't have, the problems like we saw, all these people sleep tight, like I've been saying about the warehouses and the lights, and kind of promises to do that. Some of that goes back to the zone. Some of that goes back to zoning, make sure that's correct. But instead, they not be able to get on top of that.
Well, first, I'm going to do the work that is required. Whether, if somebody else doesn't want to do it, I'm going to take it on because this is my township, I care about it. This is what I ran on. I worked for two years dealing with this stuff. Now, I, I had asked others, I had asked Mrs. McKee to deal with the live streaming since she was an IT infrastructure specialist. She didn't want to.
Let me, let me.
No, please, stay for that, you can reply with this. And I will do what's necessary. However, the only thing that I don't, I disagreed with, and no disrespect as a person of you, that of you being over zoning or the secretary. Because those are the major, one of the major areas that there has been issues with just how things were run, how, how things were addressed, how, so I wanted to make sure that, that was properly addressed. But as far as anything else, no, I'm not looking like, hey, I've got, actually doing administrator is saying, hey, let's have the administrator deal with that stuff. We can become the advisory board, we can deal with the issues, the special issues that we want. And we're more on an equal footing of duties. And I would think everybody would want that. And as far as economic development director is not going to want to deal with any of the administrative stuff. And then as far as an economic development director dealing with the issues they have, those issues were this prior board of trustees that approved those terms. That is nobody else's responsibility. The zoning commission voted down FedEx, the board of trustees approved it. The board of trustees approved that sound wall that is in a valley that's 10 foot that I went over there multiple times and you can see straight over it. You might as well not have that wall there. So those are the kind of things that I, I think we need to address. An economic development director is not going to do it. Do we have a need for it? Sure. But also the administrator can go for grants, grant writing. I, I just think that in all of the issues that I bring up, I've asked both trustees, what do you want on the agenda? A and S are Mrs. McKee's. B through R are my items. It seems like I'm the only one concerned about the policies not being in place, being followed, being, we're not even following the law in many places. So as administrator, we need that.
Why would you say that?
We're ORC, we're not following ORC with records requests. We're not following, we're not retaining emails properly.
The problem is we're trying to do too much on one agenda. We could break it up. I mean, I understand these things need to be addressed, but if.
But following it.
We need to do it, I'm sorry?
No, I see.
Okay. If we just need to do a few, handle a few of the most important ones and then move to the next. I think we're trying to put too much on, on the agenda at one time. And, and, and that's a problem. You're getting all this stuff, I see it here, you're right. I mean, it's listed there, but it's, it's, you know. So it's almost like you're saying we're not participating. You shouldn't make us feel that way and tell the residents we're not participating, because we are. It's just that you're more, I think, moving a lot quicker than I would do in some cases. Because I have to understand things. I like information, I like facts, and I, and I like to know things in, in the history before I move on certain things. That's just how I operate. So I, I'm not saying you're wrong for this, but I'm just saying there's a lot here.
And I, I agree, but these are the pared down issues that besides the blessing box, are required now, the driver's abstract? We could have drivers not saying we do with suspended CBLs.
Yeah, I'm not saying that.
But, no, let me say, but you did, you did just say that. There are other, you know, employee evaluations.
Fireworks, that, that, that happened back in September.
No, and I just spoke to, or we had a risk assessment. And he was very concerned about fireworks, that there's, there was no official agreement, there was no harmful, harmless. If something happened, an explosion or even food poisoning, that would, that would host it. And I don't think officially, but we would be named in the lawsuit. And he was very concerned. So that, having liability out there is an immediate concern. Driver's abstract, immediate concern. Employee evaluation is immediate concern because we have an employee, his anniversary date is 3/1. So if we're going to follow our policy, we need to have that before that. Broker hiring or down. I mean, I can put, these are the, I could have had two, three pages of these. And that's what I'm trying to do. But again, it seems like, I, I'm the only one saying we need change. And that's where I need the support from this board to address these things. Snowplow backup driver policy, we don't have that. And we'll deal with all this stuff, but these are immediate. So I think we need to get back to the administrator, what, how does this board want to proceed? I think we should proceed immediately to interview these four. And if more come in, we can add, have a meeting, we could do it on our March 1st regular meeting, or we could call a special meeting. Is that something you would entertain, or you want to make a motion?
Can I ask something?
Who, who's that?
Like money, I don't know, the money that, that maybe you know trash paid for with, I mean, everybody likes that. But, you know, it happens two or three times a year, could that money be put into?
Are you allowed to open it for public comments?
We have.
I know, I just, sorry, sorry, Jill, but can you open it for public comments?
No.
Well, we, no.
Sorry.
We, well, we can have comments at that time if we please. I'm always up for more transparency. But we do have a long meeting, meeting and that, but we do have the funds. We have a 20, 30% carryover. And that was one of my contentions of paying trash, paying this, suspending things when we're not dealing with the things we need to. And honestly, coming in here, running private business, I, it, it's hard to see how the, it's been held together with strings and duct tape. Because things are coming apart of compliance, of, and that auto report shows that, that there's major compliance issues. And again, we're not retaining emails properly. We're not, it's, and that's why I said, following the law, that's ORC, we're required to do that. And we can get sued. And let's not get sued. So. But, but if you prepare, you don't, just like with the fireworks, that if you have that hold harmless and you have that, it protects you more than, you know, unofficial hosting and then you get sued. If you want to talk to the risk administrator, I can let you know. But again, I think we've got to focus on administrator hiring. It sounds like there's some changing of minds on that. I think we should move forward.
Kind of before I help you, Mark.
Mark, can I provide a recommendation? What?
Draw back how we did before, if we didn't have all this, which was fine, you're new board, we can do, do things differently. But before we went in, there was a problem. Pick one of these off the air, say the plowing or saltine or whatever, right? The trustee is broker supervised, we'll address that, come back to the board, say here's the problem, here's the solution. What do you guys think before that? And we move on. It wouldn't be we got to hire administrator to take care of it, so that's a problem. It's almost like you bring it, find a solution and bring it to us. That's your department, that's who you're looking at. Now, if it's too much, I mean, I can help you out with some of the stuff. But my point is, is that it shouldn't be, I don't know, I've got to hire someone to do that right now. We're refining a lot of stuff, but.
Because you, you need policies, procedures, and people in place to run, run the township. And it, and it hasn't worked with the trustees. You were over zoning and the secretary for what, in 17 and 18. There's not one evaluation that employs forms for that. Why weren't they done or what? It's, it's needed, this, we can't operate this as a small $250,000 township.
Exactly. Evaluate, form, and four person, all that.
It's in the employee manual that it's written annually, written annual evaluations. And 2016 for two employees was the last one. So that, that's what I'm saying, it's, we're, the prior board's been so willing to spend $375,000 to pay everybody's trash, but not run the township properly. And I, I don't know how clearer I could be on that. We're, we've got a $7 to $10 million budget, we've got everything coming in. We've got pressure now of trying to break the Renesworth annexation. We've got developers, we've got sewer issues, we've got, and it's not saying somebody else take care of this. I'm addressing it, the plowing of the unticked, that you wrote, this is, this has been my full time attention. It's, and it's not going to work with three different trustees doing piecemeal this and that. Who's going to apply for grants? Who's going to apply for?
What, is it rug grant, is it?
There's ton, there's grants for street signs, $50,000 every other year. There's so many grants, but someone has to spend the time to address it. There was the grant, the OPWC grant, you guys approved on election night, that Mr. Carlisle did not submit three days later. We lost out on that.
Well, why that happened, that's not, that was.
Right. And, but that was by resolution, he was required to apply for it and he did not. But again, I don't, I don't know why there's such a pushback of having somebody admit it. Because we don't have, the policies aren't being followed. The, you've been here 14 years. Is this how it should be run? I, I, no.
Oh, they passed it purpose over 14 years. We used to make that little building over there and just, yeah, before I came, it was pretty much.
Find and move on. But I know, but that's location, I'm saying, there's an issue. So do, does this board want to interview these four applicants and if any other come, come in between now and the time that is set? I move to interview these four applicants and any applicant, any other applicants that we receive by February 28th at our March 1st meeting, or second. And second doesn't mean you'd agree, it's just discussion.
All right, exactly. So we can finish our agreement, all right?
There's, there, okay, so discussion.
So the discussion would be, you're absolutely, you're not absolutely planning on hiring someone, are you?
No, if, if there's a good fit, if, if we find the one, like we did with our fiscal officer, we had four that I, I, I'm very thankful that in that four, we had that chance. It might be, this one, I haven't looked at everybody's resumes and that, but we got to move forward. We can't just.
We'll remember it, okay. If we move forward, I can understand moving forward.
And we're going to interview them and we, that's choosing them.
Yeah, that's true. I, I can go for that, I just don't want to be in a position where we're pushed to pick one of the, whoever comes in.
Nope.
Because I haven't seen, I haven't seen either two, but the first two I saw were not, you know, one of ours I just didn't see. And so.
Okay, so by the 28th, interview them first, anybody that applies up to 28th, we're going to interview them first.
On March 1st?
Yes, that's our next.
We do all that to the people that apply, I suppose, that at least we can interview. Do you feel, Mark, or Jeff, do you feel that you have enough knowledge and wisdom to interview this person on that level?
What's that, as far as?
Administrative position. You know, that's a legitimate question. I, I don't, I don't have the knowledge.
Well, Mark and I are looking for two different people, so.
So I would not have.
Very good combo, I think, for whoever agree on something like that, so. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
All right, that passes, simple interview. On the March 1st, for any applications received by the February 28th, point person for the South Coast Licking Community Water and Sewer capacity issue. We discussed that briefly, been contacted by Rob Platt there again and various developers that we need to try to move that forward. I've been dealing with this quite a bit. I would recommend myself as the point person, I can report back to the board. What's the board's pleasure, or do you have any discussion with that? All right, I'll make a motion that I'm the point person for the South Coast Licking, Licking County Sewer and Water capacity issue. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. McKee, seconds.
Could this be a temporary, temporary, do we tie it up?
Just, just for this, we could change, we can, it's just, we need to deal with Rob Platt, the developers. We all can come together, we can't have the exact same session as we did that one time.
All right.
And I can report back to the board, so. Any other discussion? Now, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
All right, it passes. New business, Mr. Leonard of Neighborhood Strategies LLC wanted to give a talk. Apology for the delay in this.
I'd like to go up here and this is my first review, I appreciate it. There was a comprehensive plan on all businesses.
Oh, I'll deal with that after you, sorry.
Yeah, okay, thank you, board of trustees. So my name's Jim Leonard from Neighborhood Strategies. 62283 Cabin Hill Road, all the way in New Comfort, Ohio. I am here tonight to pitch an idea. And I think, from what I heard, maybe it's warranted or not, I don't know. But the economic development consultant is similarly that Mr. Evans mentioned, Montrose Group does for the city of Cattasqua. I am interested in that for not only your community, but some other communities as well, to help maintain or do, continue to do a lot of things that have been done prior to the new board, new administration. I've worked for 17 years in Licking County, the last 12 up in the village, the city of Johnstown, and recently left to do this by myself with the support of my money. So I similarly like the comprehensive plan proposal I've submitted. I also have an economic development proposal to submit to you for consideration. I hope somebody, not necessarily me, I hope you pick me. But if you don't, definitely get someone to redo your comp plan, definitely get someone to do your, your economic development planning as well. Intel was mentioned a couple of times. I think with that, we can expect the worst, and that's probably going to be two times worse than that in terms of development pressure, jobs, traffic creation, and all the things that come with development. So I've implored a lot of the townships I've spoken with, again, I hope you pick me to do your plan. But if you don't, pick someone, and pick them relatively soon, 18 months before construction is going to fly by with the speed of government. Currently, I'm working in Harrison Township, the village of Hanover, and the village of Granville to help with various planning aspects on their behalf as well. So I'll leave it at that, if there's any questions, and I'll see you in my proposal.
Okay, that's in addition to exist as a separate proposal for an economic development director search.
Correct.
That's separate.
Yeah, I know, you guys, I listened, I listened to the YouTube, which I appreciate, watching that at 9 o'clock at night, at my convenience. I watched the village of Talkin' Lake yesterday, I said, I'm just a local government nerd, I can't get away from it. But yeah, this is in addition, this is to be your township economic development, you know, like in, on a contract basis like Montrose Group is for it.
Question, Jim, you, did, did I hear you used to, you work on our comprehensive, comprehensive plan that we are?
Yeah, I left officially before it was adopted, but the bulk of it in 2011, I think. When I worked with the planning commission, I didn't do a lot of work with, actually Scott Fulton, he's up in Cattasqua right now. Yes, yeah, when I was with the planning commission, I worked with trustee Mark Holder and Jeff, I think, at the time on that comprehensive plan. Unless it's bad, then you're.
Fiscal officer has a question.
Yes.
Oh, are you done, awesome?
Yeah.
So with the explosive growth here and everybody needing you, how would you, how would you limit or choose what you take on? Because I can see you having 100 clients and spreading yourself wide, wide, so.
I could talk to my wife later. I could talk to my wife later.
Yep, right, so, how, are you like cherry picking, or how are you?
Yes.
Pick which townships you want?
So I've, I have four jobs that I want right now, that I'm going after, this being one of them, because you're exactly right, my phone has not stopped running since Intel announced, but I have some others in the pipeline as well, so if, at the township, or any of, any of those say no, I'll go on and push a little harder on the next one. If I get two or three of these four that I want, then I'm done for the year, 18 months of searching for other projects. I do not want a divorce, I, I stopped. The whole reason I got out of my, my old job was stress and, and I love for a reason, and I'm not going to recreate that for my family, so that is why I will stop at a few of the larger projects, and not take on any more than I need to.
Do you have a timeline for the return, like the answer for your proposal?
No.
So like if we waited six months, if they waited six months, we'd be okay with that for the answer?
Uh, I'll have to reevaluate, I mean, the sooner the better, obviously, I, I had this conversation with a couple of the bigger clients, I have a utility company that I have a big contract out there for, saying, you know, I don't say it's first come, first served, but it's.
It's one of it.
Two, two of the three big ones that I've done, six months from now, I, maybe everyone says another big one, which is, you know, and, and I'll be waiting to figure these six months out.
And this is a, a con, this, are you, it's a contract?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, I will not be an employee 1099.
It's a contract, okay. 99?
This is for economic development, or is this for the plan itself?
No, it's a consultant. The plan is, this is the contract, I'm a consultant, I'm just giving you the contract.
It's a big test.
Yeah, just like Montrose. I think it's a little more, I looked over Montrose's contract, mine's not as detailed, but I think I'm providing more than what they are. Any of those, they can be modified in there, you know, so if you're like Jim, you're way out of the league on this one, tell me, we can, I can amend this as needed.
Any other questions? I think we could kind of delve into it a little bit more after we look into it.
But this, was the economic, was our development plan, or?
The comp plan.
The comp plan part of this?
No.
Because it's only separate from this?
Yes. No, I, I think there could be fee savings if, if I were, because a lot of the things that for economic, yeah, so if I am more than willing to look at both together, I think your comp plan costs could come down, absolutely, if, if I was selected to, to work on that company.
Well, I think we should research this more and reach out and.
I appreciate you talking.
And then as far as the comp plan, we need to get back to that, the whole business has to get there. I've, I've been speaking to a lot of other townships that have gone through a comp plan, one does every five years, just to see what the process is, and now, so I'm kind of pulling all that together, then kind of, kind of move forward with, with more proposals, I didn't want to do more proposals before I kind of went through that, then we'll, we'll do what this, as a board, all of them, have to sign out of them and move forward.
Well, it sounds like the plan should move forward pretty quick, so.
Yeah, oh, to sign him while I want to.
No, to decide, to decide, I said, to decide. So he can either move on, or we can.
Yeah, I think, well, it was a week, no, no, due diligence.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not here to embarrass you all, I mean, I'm, I'm just being honest with Julie's question.
We're not getting a free toaster if we sign it.
Oh, maybe, no.
But, all right, there's no other questions, or?
Thank you, trustees, appreciate it.
All right, and this one is for our fiscal officer, electronic signatures for purchase orders and checks.
What do you need, you skipped the, the back bills, though?
I, I did eat the comprehensive plan there, and he was the other one, we already did the point person. So, B, new business, electronic signatures for purchase orders and checks, Julie, do you want to explain?
I've been working with the township officer from Violet Township with regard to electronic signatures for purchase orders and checks, and have kind of the conclusion that it is best to have their electronic signatures on the documents so that they can speed up, they can speed up going out faster, so I'm not paying things late, I'm a little bit of a crunch right now because I was starting to clean up January not being done, and then the first half of February was just starting, so she and I have worked on the legal jargon for getting it to the trustees and having them pass this, just so I can use their electronic signatures.
Is there a resolution?
I'm glad I sent it to you, but I didn't see it here, when I.
You sent it to us?
I, I did, and I thought she would put it in here, but it's not in here.
Laura's still here to, to handle that.
No, oh, she can, she just took off.
Well, we can skip this, as, maybe we can work and try to print that, print that up. Do you have a copy of that that you can print? Because we don't need you for a couple of these other ones, which you able to.
Yeah, it's actually on the, it's also on the bills, I believe, that you submitted for, for, for purchase orders, but this one you approved for January, November.
This one?
Yes, that's that.
Oh, here's the whole thing, it's a whole second page.
I don't see anything about electronic signatures on it, or it's part of this whole?
I think it's part of the, the code on the file that she's sent, this section that it's in. I thought, I sent it to you several markups, but I can go get it again, or I can, I can play.
Do you want to print it real quick?
Yeah.
And then we can deal with the other, so we'll, we'll go, well, we'll skip the C2, because that would be, we'll go to the, the 2021 mileage certification with the county engineer. On that, I move to certify the mileage for the 2021 Township Highway System Mileage Certification as presented, which is 54 miles, point 695. Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. McKee, seconds. Discussion?
Was that up pretty often last year?
Laura's got here the same mileage, I think it's down like point four due to one small Mileage is point 004 down due to an incorporation of Pierreford County. It was re-logged and there's county split.
Oh, adjusted mileage, they suggested.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, there's a second, any other discussion? No? Roll call, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans, yes, Ms. McKee?
Yes.
All right, that passes, and then we'll all have to sign that. All right, that's done. Social media page, request for creation, I sent these to you guys earlier, I don't have a copy of that, this occurred to us too, if you don't have one already. I believe, like I said, transparency and communication, I believe using social media, including Facebook and YouTube for videos on that, as a way to reach our residents, provide information, even like the fireworks last year, I, I think they were posted on website, but nobody proactively checks the website every week, or social media kind of pushes it, and people can share. This is a policy, I believe, I believe it from Liberty?
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 Del River?
Possibly, I, I've pulled so many, but I, I think this is not there. The only thing I changed is employee use of social media is outlined in the employee handbook, ours doesn't currently, so I, I struck that, otherwise, it's, it's pretty much the same, same, same policy, so I don't know if you want to, if you've had a chance to look at this.
I haven't, I'd like to.
Okay. Do you want to, we, we can postpone that until the next meeting, we'll table this.
All right.
Let's table. Then we got Edna fireworks. As a resident, I had requested information on this and really didn't get much, I don't know if you guys have gotten, have, this was information I said earlier, but if you did it. As I said, we had a risk assessment with our insurer, asked about fireworks, and he was pretty concerned that there doesn't seem to be any official board action which approved it, or any contracts, or, or kind of hold harmless. Mr. Johnson, do you, do you know if the board approved hosting the Edna fireworks the last two years?
Yes.
Or, or board action?
I don't.
How, how was, how did the township host this without board action?
The township got host on here, it's been working only for the west part, but. Because. We just had it in our township, so.
But here, here's the township that our secretary sent out, the Edna Township trustees are hosting the second annual, and I know our employees, Mrs. Brown, put a lot of hours in, in, in dealing with VIPs, getting stuff done on there, I know funds were sent to Mr. Carlisle's house, I mean.
Sent to his house?
Donations and funds were directed to the house, I believe, in the name of the developer, maybe? As a resident, I, I tried to get information, some was denied, but we don't have, to me, this is something that should be board approved, because we're taking a liability that we're hosting, we placed it on our website, promoting it, and even our township employees and others got tables at the event, food, I don't know, drink, so I, I've got a lot of questions, and our insurer does too, of what's going on, and I don't know.
I was here, so I don't know.
You were here the last two years, weren't you, huh?
Not at fireworks, so I don't know what they got angles or without any of that.
Well, that's in the VIP section, but, Mr. 17, do you have any, like, can you clarify, like, what was Edna's role in this?
Yeah, so, I'm RJ Sabatino again, tumble and trail all the fireworks occurred on our property. Edna Township's involvement, although we were happy to say host, I mean, Edna Township gathered some sponsors to help finance some of the fireworks, but we paid for everything, and we were happy to host, it was, in the last couple of years, it's been a great event, we're happy to host again, hopefully don't lose as much money as we have the past two years, but, I mean, typically, the relationship is that the township has with their relationships with businesses and local, the local businesses in the township, get sponsors to help pay for the events, although it does not cover nearly all the costs, that's, that was the relationship to my understanding.
Okay, because I have, and this is your father, Ron, but, an email to the Licking County Health saying, my name is Ron Sabatino, I am facilitating the Edna Township trustees regarding an event that they are planning. You may know that the trustees have initiated annual fireworks. I mean, to me, I'm, I'm very concerned about number one, the liability, and our insurers too, and I, I don't think it's appropriate that a single trustee would be able to go on his own and just decide to host an event, especially when, I mean, I've got emails after emails of hours that Laura's put in, that, and they, even, he indicated that we helped get sponsors, and is this like an off-the-books operation?
How would it be off-the-books?
It's not approved by the board. I can't go out and just sponsor Jim's jungle gym.
The township paid for nothing. They paid for nothing. We paid, and the businesses.
But the township can't, I, I don't believe, and I'm waiting for the response from the prosecutor, that, I don't, an individual, we can't take action on our own, so an individual cannot obligate us to host an event, or, I mean, we, that would just be wrong.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's got to be, no, I don't know.
The township solicitors, the township solicitors, businesses, so they.
Approved, well.
The businesses.
RJ, excuse me. So, I, 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 I mean, it's a great event, it's great fireworks and that, but I'm concerned about liability, number one, and as I said, as a resident before, I saw that the, the money being solicited was being sent to Mr. Carlisle's house. If, if the township was assisting in that, why wouldn't it come to the township? Why, I mean, I've got so many questions, so if you have any answers, I.
My understanding that township had really no more, all we can say is in our township, and if we can't help you anyway, pull it off, we will, but we're not sponsoring it, we're not putting money into it.
But that's not.
I'm not an, I'm not an attorney, so you, I mean, you're going to check with your legal team and your insurance.
Right, I mean, this has nothing to do, I mean, if, if the township or trustee went to an outside business, that, that's, I was just trying to get more information, but apparently there's no agreement, there's, and if you're, you're going to even insulate, just on the fringe host, or you're attaching liability, if, if someone choked on a hot dog there, they're going to sue everybody involved, including Edna Township, and that was, that was indicated by our insurer, so I think if we do move forward, it's got to be a formal agreement, an approval by the board.
We are invested in the event.
Not even invested or not.
Township is going to be part of it, we're asking at that point if we're going to do that.
We were hosting it before.
And we were just the isolated person else out with it.
They were called that, township fireworks, I mean, we did that, then, we all love at them, so we're happy to host, although we, although we lose as much as we lose.
RJ, please. Our, our secretary expended township resources for this, her time, her effort, her, we can't.
That doc, or she did, actually, her.
Oh, there's.
You can add the 12 hours.
You can't create VIP lists and going back and forth, and my other thing is, is there any issue with being provided free, I know, small gigs are fine, but I had purchased a table, it was a hundred dollars a table, well, you're giving VIPs of township trustees, everybody, food was a drink, was there, I just have a lot of questions.
You shouldn't volunteer the time for this, or involve your time in it, you're John and volunteer services.
With Edna Township? I'm, I'm just saying, if we're going to do it proper, it's got to be working, so I think we should.
Maybe this, do it off one more email or on Sabatino.
No, I've, I've got a stack of.
A Leslie house?
Oh, yeah.
From where?
From the township.
Okay. A, a back and forth?
Yes. I'll provide them all to you, but I want to bring your board's attention and.
If I understand, since I was going to be here, I was going to be part of it, because I'm always going to have a team, that Sabatino's was running it, there's a nation to be out there, John will work on some of that possibly, we can list the people together that were dignitaries to invite, and make it a bigger event, and that was the script for township on, for most part, that's the way I understood it, now something else was done, that's different from what I'm seeing.
Well, again, from my point is, the administration of it, and making sure we have proper insurance, proper hold harmless, proper, that's where the whole thing is, we need to run this properly, and that should have been board action, just like we made a motion to put me as a point person, hosting fireworks at a minimum should have been board. There's no, there's no record of anything, so I don't know when those discussions would happen, again, outside the meeting, proper, so it, it needs to be in the meeting.
Was that an Edna Township trustee you're saying?
Yes.
Because I, I've heard of social media, thinking, you're supposed to think on social media under your own opinion.
No.
And claim it underneath that Edna Township trustee.
Sincerely, John Carlisle, present Board of Trustees.
Well, I'm saying that I, I see the same thing on social media thing from you.
Not saying, or given Edna, uh, Township, as my physical capacity, but whatever I do doesn't affect what this is. This one, just saying that if we're going to, I, I was trying to do this to find more information.
You're trying to help people, the people in the township, right? People aware, like, I don't think you're correct.
Well, I'm trying to make sure that if we do it again, we do it properly, and I'm trying to find.
I understand that, and that, that's, that's ones that go happen, liberty?
Yeah.
That is liberty, but also to even find out, maybe we had it, but we couldn't find it, but we don't have.
I don't believe there is one.
And that, that was, that was the purpose of this, so, we can discuss it later. And that was, that was the purpose of this, so we can discuss it later.
For people who aren't aware.
RJ.
Cumberland, man?
No, we've got a lot on this, and we can deal with it later.
Real quick, if I could?
Real quick, listen.
Labor Day fireworks, Cumberland Trail would host for the past two years. Edna Township can't quite compete with the red light boom, so we do it Labor Day, right? We're happy to do it again, although we lose money. But maybe if a park happens eventually, then the township would have to do their own hosting. My lawyer will talk hosting. And that would be great, but I mean, for now, Cumberland Trail would be happy to host another Edna Township fireworks. If not, if you're not interested, maybe you're not.
I appreciate it, we'll, we'll talk to you, but we've gotta keep this moving on.
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, did you wanna go back to your B, the electronic signatures? This was the.
Can I just ask if we, when you go back to that situation, maybe we should get insurance quotes of what the liability insurance would be for that?
I'm dealing with the risk assessment, officer.
Yeah, so, like I was saying, I wanna be able to use your electronic signatures on purchase orders and checks expedited. They're all within the budget that you've approved, and it won't go outside of those parameters.
So how would we see the bills and the purchase orders and stuff, then, if they're already signed? How would we, because I have, I look at them on the center here, I look through them, and I make sure before I sign them, that it's.
I can bring them to every meeting. In some situations, there's blanket purchase orders where I'll put twenty-five thousand in it because I know over the year we're gonna spend twenty-five thousand with the vendor. So I will just keep hitting that purchase order that you've approved for those bills, so that negates needing to bring that one every time. Any new purchase orders that go out to any new vendors or that haven't been approved would be brought. And at the end of each month, I give you an entire list of all the vendor payments that I have made to double check, like I brought for January's, is January, yeah, is January's in here?
I don't, so the pay bills, we approved vouchers, approved the, like, what, would that how?
You would, you would still approve the purchase orders for anything new and out of the ordinary. And you'll still probably see quite a bit because there aren't, there are gonna be blanket purchase orders at this point. But it would allow, it would allow me to put your electronic signature on there instead of you having to sign a hundred times every night for everything.
Yeah, I don't know about that, I was gonna, I was gonna see.
Yeah, and I have them on my chair, so.
That's why I was saying, if you could actually just, we used to get list everything, like, I'd just like to look down the list, and if I had a question, I'd check, like, come around for your sign, and I'd just look through the receipt that is attached to it. Okay, so that's four, nine, twelve.
Yeah, it needs to load.
Okay. Okay, so then I'll find.
All right, so any discussions?
We covered, yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution, you have a number on here, twenty-two dash zero two dash fifteen dash one. Resolution to authorize fiscal officer to use digital signature of trustees on purchase orders, warrants, and electronic fund transfers. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Mrs. McKee, seconds, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes, that passes. And then, do we wanna, do you wanna deal with their motion to pay bills now with these purchase orders to get it up, right? We'll skip to this. And I'll just, we can discuss this after we make the motion. I'll make the motion to approve resolution number two-two dash zero two dash fifteen dash two. Resolution to approve purchase orders as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. McKee, seconds, discussion. Any questions on any of the purchase orders or what we're doing here? No? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
All right, that is approved. Now we got that, look around the signatures. The next thing, C, certificate of transition. That was, I had an inquiry before our fiscal officer came in regarding the certificate, and I had requested a copy of the list so I could just kinda understand what, what's going on. And here's a copy of the transition. And our previous fiscal officer, Walter Rogers, attested to providing lists of numerous items to facilitate this transition. It's actually a new statutory requirement that was implemented in April. As I understand, these lists were actually not provided. And Mr. Johnson, you attested to receiving these, these items, and I'm concerned that, number one, Mr. Rogers didn't comply with the statutory requirements, and it's causing our fiscal officer additional work and deficit, and I would recommend that this be submitted to the auditor of state as non-compliance, and let them deal with it. But again, Mr. Johnson, you were working with Mr. Rogers, why weren't the list provided that they were tested to?
They quieted honest. He didn't wanna talk with you, he didn't wanna talk with anybody else, he was done, he was relieved, he was lucky. I got the information I got out of him for one, but I didn't think legal back. I was trying to facilitate the thing to go on, make it easy as I could for our incoming fiscal officer. The treatment that you gave a fiscal officer before, for your record, just caused a lot of problems, never. And I was trying to smooth, make a smoother transition. So if you wanna talk about this, you go right ahead. Do whatever you want, let your luck, you got what I got out of you.
No, but what I'm saying.
You'll answer a call if I call him, and you'll answer a question.
Right.
So do what you want, then. That's what I look at.
Well, that's.
I think this is a non-issue.
No, this was put into place.
Then do something about it more.
No, but I'm saying this was put into place because of this specific issue of, of non, non-transition, non. And our fiscal officer even has, she can't get in a system that she needs to, to provide a report by the eighteenth.
Well, are you in?
He's.
Are you in?
No.
What are you looking for?
It's one I have to file with regarding the care is active.
Oh, see.
So I'm in contact with them to get a username and password. It's just, everything is delayed by not having usernames and passwords.
Are you dealing with that gentleman from, that was doing the audit on it, that you're working with?
No.
Okay.
It was an email I received from, I can't remember, but there was that that's due, and there was something that was due today. So it's just, it's just more challenging without usernames and passwords, or even a list of upcoming things that need to be done. They weren't in the office, they weren't, I didn't even know they, they should be on my radar until I get an email that says, this is due fifteen, this is due fifteen, this is due fifteen, and then something else comes in that's due the eighteen. So I just end up scrambling to figure out, you know, even just how to log in to see what it is that they want, so.
But I'm saying, I showed you where passwords were.
Yes, you did.
And there was not, that password's not there.
They weren't, there weren't folders for those things.
Okay. All right. Did I show you where those were?
I mean, it just, it just delays a little bit on my part. I'm getting everybody, but the things that we need are required.
Hey, my thing is, it could possibly be, my thing is, again, no matter what, what the treatment, and I, and I treated him fine. We had disagreements, but he had a statutory duty that, I believe it's a misdemeanor if you don't, don't provide this, but he attested to providing this information, and he did not. You attested to receiving the information, and you did not. I'm concerned that we don't know what we don't know. We don't know what's out there, we don't, and this could be opening up our new fiscal officer to possible, I don't know, liability, if there's an audit, and if, so this should be completed. Our books have been a mess, and this wasn't even completed properly. So again, I encourage, this is up to our fiscal officer to, to submit this to the auditor of state, but I would encourage that this be submitted because it is deficient, and wildly deficient, because there were no lists provided whatsoever. You can't just say it's here, it's there, it isn't the list. So Julie, I'll leave that to you, or if you guys have any questions, or if you're concerned by this.
Oh, yeah, I'm concerned about this. I know that it should have been completed, and you can't just sign something that's not complete, because this is a certificate of completion, so, yeah.
Hope there's no other discussion. We'll move on to plowing, insulting, undedicated roads. I received an email from a resident asking about their neighborhood being plowed, if the agreement with former trustee Mr. Carlisle was still in place with the developer to plow their undedicated roads, and if we would continue that. I knew nothing about this. I inquired a bit, I talked to Mr. Sevettino, he indicated that there was an agreement, and he was gonna look for the texts of that. The following day, I received an email from Mr. Sevettino, the developer of Ellis and Cumberland, that indicated, that then indicated that he did not direct, that he, that one day he said, "Mark, I understand, I will look through my texts and emails," and then he said that he did not direct, be advised that we never authorized or directed the township to plow roads. But then I got an email saying, "John C offered to plow it once last year." My question is, it's undedicated roads, why is the township plowing what the, what the developers are responsible for, when using township resources, time, equipment, materials, to plow, and this is the section in, I think it's the bush, there's a map in the back, it's section one and section two, part one, the bush.
That's the button brush.
Fun Bush, and the roads there leading up to Trail West, those have not been dedicated. And apparently there was an agreement between Mr. Carlisle and the developer, and in this email on the front, it's from John Carlisle, said, "I have spoke with Mr. Ron Sevettino, we have an agreement for your snow removal. If you'd like to discuss it, please contact me." The homeowner said, "I forgot to mention that I did talk to Carlisle about this last year." The agreement was that Ron Sevettino would reimburse at the township every time they plow. Now, I talked to our secretary, and she said she was aware of the agreement, but she doesn't know what the agreement was. There was no invoicing, there was no payment. Our road crew supervisor indicated that there was an agreement also, and that's when I questioned him, you know, we're still doing it. I understand that they are residents of Edna, and however, the road has not been dedicated to Edna, and it was the developer's responsibility, so again, it looks like one person made an off-the-books agreement using township resources for the benefit of the developer. And I'm concerned about that for number one, liability, number one, township resources. Again, I put this with the prosecutor, I haven't heard back yet, that if we're, I don't think we're even allowed to make that such an agreement because I don't think we could do that for the schools either, and if so, it's under emergency to provide fireworks. Are you aware, Mr. Johnson, of this, or?
I was gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I don't know much about this. Mr. Carlisle, you have most of this?
But again, my, my concern is, I mean, I think right now it is still undedicated, so I don't think we should provide. I was trying to look to see if we had an agreement, we don't have an agreement, so I'm gonna direct, it's RJ that.
Are you, are you discussing this year?
This year and last year. Now, hold on, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend that, I'm gonna direct Bubba to not plow the Fun Bush, and that, that is the developers for the remainder of this year, but we need to figure out what was our cost and what was provided before, because these were township resources that the developer should have paid.
What happened, what happened this year with the big snowstorm?
We plowed it.
Oh, gosh. Okay, so.
Because there was an agreement, and. And for, those that know, this is, you're with the developer for the Ellis and Cumberland.
So this is, this last snowstorm?
And the prior little ones, we've gone through there numerous times, and in two thousand twenty also. When I talked to your father, he indicated that, well, it was a little bit, but then the roads were dedicated, the roads weren't dedicated. That was the other part of the Trail West extension, but this is the button motion. There's still issues where it's not dedicated, but my, my issue is township resources were expended by private agreement from one trustee that was number one improper, and number two, were not even being reimbursed.
So for this year, it's, it's not like, there's this administration here, there was, there was you three trustees, right?
No, they, they were acting on the agreement from last year, so if there's an agreement, and I would caution you to not say that it was this board's fault or anything.
I, I mean, I'm not saying that there's any.
Because we're six weeks in, and these are the kind of issues that I'm trying to, to find out and correct. Because again, we have liability. What if we had a kid plowing that portion of the dedicated thing? So I asked your father, he said he, he communicated with Mr. Carlisle, it would be a text. Mr. Carlisle did not like emails, I don't speculate why, but that he had a text, but then he sent the email saying, "We absolutely didn't direct anything," but then said, "Well, we did one time." So there's a little difference there. I'm waiting to hear back from the prosecutor. I just did an initial request, but I would like to formally put this to the prosecutor to figure out what, what happened, why, and how do we figure out the compensation for this?
Again, so I mean, it sounds like, I mean, there was a big snowstorm, and that, I mean, it's your administration now.
Okay.
But for the last.
RJ, stop. I was directing my question to him.
Okay.
So I, I would move to direct the prosecutor to investigate this and to determine what compensation should, should be received, if any, I believe we should, even if we weren't supposed to, because it was on the actions of one person. So, I mean, we expended township time. Even this last storm, there was a small section of road, but our township employees had to direct their resources to those cul-de-sacs, that road. I mean, it's, it's, I believe, point six of the mile, but it's over one percent of our total roads. You break that down, I mean, it's not nothing, but it's something. So I, I don't know if it's, what, what would someone pay to have that plowed from a private company? That last storm? Thousands. I mean, people are clearing driveways for a hundred months.
Yeah, I guess, how, how do we determine that we were plowing this year, though?
The road crew was acting on the agreement that they were told was in place. I did not know it was on any agreement.
I don't either, so.
Until that resident on Fun Bush emailed me and forwarded this.
So we just, I mean, I would take that on our, but we did, our, our, just plowed it, was it like they were supposed to, right?
Yes, under the agreement.
Was there one on Trail West, though, that they said got turned over?
Yeah.
Trail West, the last one, that, that got, that got turned over in November.
Okay, but.
And I doubt, I don't recall any snowstorms or anything at that time, so that, that probably didn't happen, but even the developer admits that there was one time, if there was one time last, why wasn't there a payment? But again, I don't think per Ohio provides. But again, I don't think per Ohio的颜色 code, we're allowed to do that, we're restricted to what we can do as a township, and I can't obligate us to go plow best by on a private agreement, and this is what happened here. So again, township resources, I mean, if Mr. Carlisle broke the law or something, that's up to the prosecutor to determine, but I'm worried about being compensated for the township resources and stopping that now, I don't know if we have another storm or not, but I assure you that we put a lot of salt in that.
Well, I'm not, not, not trying to, did your anything work, because you didn't have Bubba as a supervisor, because he was acting on like this done last year, correct?
Bubba was told there was an agreement by his supervisor, John Carlisle. No, I didn't, I was trying to find, I didn't say there's an agreement, go do this. I found out and then I questioned, where, there should be a written agreement, there should be a word action, there was none.
I don't, I don't know how you can charge somebody if you did something, and then, I mean, and they didn't want you to do it.
May I ask, be gentle, I'm second.
No, but it was a continuing agreement under the, so January 1st, we're supposed to review every-
But I didn't see an agreement.
Because it was a private agreement between one trustee and a developer.
No, that's what I'm saying, I didn't see it.
Another off-the-books.
So how would you know about any of that?
No, but another, and that's why we needed an administrator to run things properly, and that's just like the one, the same trustee had a side agreement with the developer for fireworks. We need to stop this. So, but right here, I, I make a motion to send this to the prosecutor to investigate the properness of this, and then also, if any compensation should be recovered. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McKee, seconds. Discussion? No, roll call please.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Aslan?
Yes, it passes. I'll forward that to the prosecutor. Snow removal, damage to mailbox-
Real quick, if I may, I'm sorry.
All right, so, RJ, RJ, out of order.
If there's, if there's one, if there's one instance-
Are the W's in there?
Happy to reimburse, happy to reimburse.
Out of order.
That's all I'm saying, happy to reimburse.
We will discuss it with you.
Okay.
We gotta maintain the form.
RJ, you should leave. And be quiet.
So, a snow removal, damage to mailbox policy, there was a, a brief synopsis on the website, I think it was unclear, I looked at other policies around us for that, we received many calls about mailboxes, we, we don't replace mailboxes unless there's direct contact with the plower truck, it is snow, thrown snow, ice slush, it's not covered, I just wanted to memorialize that here. I sent this out prior, hope everybody had a chance to review it. And so I proposed doing this and putting it on the website, so I would move to approve resolution 220215-3, establishing a policy for mailbox replacement on township maintained roads. Is there a second? And that just means we can have a discussion.
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson, seconds, discussion?
All right, discussion. Is this any different than what we've been doing the last, for our policy for, I'm not sure if that was actually a written policy. Does this, how has this changed for you?
What's on the website is unclear about thrown snow, about amounts for, this approves amounts for reimbursement, this handles the policy that they, they must present the mailboxes for inspection, it takes out any of the ambiguity of our policy, so that number one, maybe we don't get those calls, and number two, people are aware of the location of their mailboxes, how to protect it, what happens, but as I said, right now, I've dealt with all those calls, and the way our policy is stated on the website, it's not clear. And if the board wants to continue with the policy that thrown snow is not covered, I think that this, this clears it up. I did notice there's a mistake in the phone number on here, I would just change that to the 7717, or no, no, that, actually, that's wrong, that's the road crew department, so that's fine. Again, it stipulates cash payments if they don't have us fix it, the type, there's some mailboxes communities required that are quite expensive and we have no control over that.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
So it limits, it limits the liability, makes it clear, and I think more, more transparency, more communication of, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're not responsible for.
So we not, saying it's not done?
For what?
Whatever.
Matters, what? If a plow hit, if our plow makes contact or truck, we cover it.
Who's determined that?
If the snow, the road crew superintendent, Bubba, and then they can appeal to the road crew supervisor or administrator. Many times, I've had residents send me photos of the mailboxes down. You can clearly see, there's, there was one, Ms. McKee's neighbor, I measured it, it's three, the plow track was three foot from the front where the mailbox was, so there's no way our truck hit it, so that was thrown snow because it was heavy, it was, so you can determine, you can tell, and if there, if there's a question one way or the other, I think we go towards the resident, but when there's clear, it's what we're doing now, but this is memorializing.
But, but I know Bubba out there, he would take all the stuff, given it's temporary, right?
Correct.
So does this mean that, that we're going in $75, or we're just going to do whatever, or Bubba's going to put them off?
No, well, it depends, again, did you, did you have a chance to read this?
I haven't read this though, I can only-
I mean, it states in there that, you know, we will repair it if it's due to us, if they decide to repair it before us, they're eligible for a $75 dollar for the mailbox and post is damaged, an extra $20. So check for a hundred bucks, they took care of it. If it's something that, it could be refastened by thrown snow, we'll go out there, like Ms. McKee's neighbor, Bubba put a few screws on it, it wasn't our fault, but he did that as a courtesy, so that's memorializing here.
All right, because I don't want, I don't want a road crew guy going out fixing something that's supposed to fall, I want, you know-
You don't, you'll get off-
You're assuming it's, it's a township fault because you fixed it.
No.
And now they want one, two, four, and it was three foot away.
And here, they, and here they need, they say that, here they need to present the damaged mailboxes, encourage photos, encourage, sometimes, I mean, one of our drivers backed into a mailbox.
Yeah.
You, you can-
That's our fault, definitely.
You, you can tell, I mean, like I said, when the smoke, snow path is three foot from the mailboxes, it's thrown snow. Mr. Martin?
I'll see if I can-
This is, this is not located by another townships, that's what I pulled this from, if you don't want to, I don't think, I don't know if we're going to have another storm now, if you want to mull this over, we can table it until next one, I want to present it, so. I said ahead in time, hoping that you guys could review it. But do you want to table it, discuss it next meeting?
I still can't.
We might, we'll get it once.
I'll second. I, you know, I have this policy, I think it's all right.
We have a 808.
I have a quote, we had one hit last year, and Laura called us because no one here knew how much they were going to pay. So what I'm asking, because in our development, we have certain mailboxes, we, if they knock one over, it can't be repaired, now, we're not going to allow you to come in and throw screws and make it look hangy, if it looks bad, we want it replaced, and replace is like $185, is that a big deal? If, if, we're not going to have somebody come in, Bubba does a great job, I understand that, but we're not going to have somebody come in, put on our mailboxes and put screws through it, that's not acceptable.
Well, that, that was mentioned for as a courtesy when it's from thrown snow, because we're not responsible, if, if the snow coming off the plow is heavy, hits it, boom, it's courtesy, throw a couple, so you keep getting your mail. But as far as the cost of the mailboxes, most policies aren't, the board wants to increase it, but we have no control over the types of mailboxes, I mean, somebody could put a chandelier on the mailbox, and, you know, it's, at what level do we have it, if we want to up that, we can, but from what I've seen, a lot of them are like 60 bucks, 50 bucks, I increase it to 75, relation, and if it's post to 100 bucks. You know, but then again, if we were clearly at fault, maybe they could sue the township for a full cutback, I don't know.
We would.
Look at this one, say-
We would, because that's crazy, if your plow knocks it over and breaks it, we want it replaced.
I didn't think government entities were responsible for damage to the-
I know, but that's a different, one mailbox can be repaired.
This was last year, they hit one last year because Laura called me on it, said, "How much is it to replace it?" I don't even remember the address, but I really don't, but I don't know what they did with it, but I'm just talking in the future, if it would happen again, you guys do a great job, I'm not saying that, okay? I'm just saying if somebody backs over one when they're backing up, say, "Oh, man, look what I did."
Right.
I don't want it fixed.
I understand, but let's get back, but that, that's the thing of, part of the talk is, you know, we don't require those supplemental, we have no control over that, so most places go with the standard mailboxes, design cost, and then if somebody else wants to do it, but then again, if it's our liability, do we really have it to replace what was there? Because if you have somebody replace a mailbox, I've seen them in pickers and that, it's a couple hundred bucks for somebody to come out, put their head in it. You know, we can think about it if you want, and ask somebody to take that dollars, screws in, put that out. Right. I mean, do you, do you want to think about it, research? Any other discussions? Okay, I think I moved, you, did I move?
Yeah, Johnson's second.
Johnson's second, okay, roll call please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
There's a mailbox, snowplow backup driver policy. We, we don't have a policy in place, I looked in the past where individual members were authorized to provide assistance, but I think when we have a storm, we need assistance then. We should have a list of approved individuals that have been, their driver's abstracts pulled, that, you know, that are trained on our equipment, that we can have like a day that they could become familiar with it. I'd like to see at least four people on that list, and then if we need to call them in, we can, as, again, the last motion was specific, there were two people authorized at so much per hour, but that doesn't do any, does any good now, I think we should be more proactive than reactive, that have this in place for when we need it, because our road crew were out for 62-hour strain on rotating shifts, and by the end of it, they were tired, they, they just had to go home, they, they could have used more people, or if we had backup drivers, I mean, there were trucks sitting there sometimes, that we could have had another driver, we could have had him out, address things quicker, so again, I don't know if you want to address it now, if you want to change anything, if you had an opportunity to review this last, that year or before, but we do need a policy in place, I believe, so, do you want to think, look at this further and address it at the next meeting? I think we might be finding this, this year, however, you never know what's going to happen, but definitely next year, we need, need something in place, because we can't, if we get hit by, if that storm we had had six to eight inches of snow, we would have been there.
Well, we need to go to sleep.
Well, no, but in addition, but it's, we need to prepare, it's a safety issue for our residents, we can't just kind of wing it of, who, you know, bring, if we needed extra work, I would have to call an emergency meeting, try to figure out the people, we wouldn't know if their CDLs are, are active, because we wouldn't be able to pull a driver's abstract that quick. So having, having the bank of people that we can go to, I think is prudent. So, that would be part of, I don't, and I didn't have that in here, but, wait, I did have the driver's abstract, but I did have the training, so if you want to look, review this further and recommend any changes-
I didn't see, I didn't see the driver testing anyone, but the consortium, I didn't see, they had, they named the dealer, that they forgot to have a list, an approved list.
Right. So, do you, do you want to just table this and then come back with some language? Do you want to get the next round?
I'm going to call this one, see how they want to, how they want to work this, because I'm sure-
Okay, and I've got our insurer dealing with the insurance issues in preparation. So table, driver abstract policy. I'll just, I move recreate the Edna Township's driver abstract policy as follows. An Ohio BMV driver's abstract shall be ran upon or prior to hiring an employee, prior to an employee driving township vehicles, if such abstract hasn't been ran within the previous 12 months, annually, in October for all employees driving township vehicles or anticipated to drive township vehicles. Additionally, employees who use their own vehicles for township businesses shall have the driver's abstract ran annually. Is there a second? So I want for discussion. Ms. McKee, seconds. Purpose of this is just to ensure people have a valid license, not saying any employee right now is, is doing that, but you could have temptation that if an employee is trying to feed their family, gets a DUI, loses their CDL or whatever, does he tell the employer?
They don't even know that.
If he, well, no, what I'm saying, or, or anything, we, we don't have those driver's abstracts, or, or even people, like Mr. Singleton, again, not saying that, but he's using his vehicle, or Mr. Shaloo, now as Assistant zoning inspector, to go out on township business, those should be, and I confirmed with our, our insurer, driver's abstracts annually. Right now, when people are hired, a copy of the license is taken and that's it, that might not be valid. So, an abstract should be ran each time, it's five bucks, can be done annually, I've got it here just from the road crew, and I think it should be in October, prior to plowing, because that's when you have your most liability. And here's motion, copy motion Q1, and I've asked Julie to prepare a check for these, just as part of my duties as the supervisor of the road crew, to, to run this driver's abstract here. But I do think that we should have a policy, we could incorporate it, redo our, our personnel manual, but again, I think it's prudent and part of running an operation that this be in place, because I'm surprised once, never been done. Is there any discussion, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
All right, that passes, and then Julie, I'll have the envelope and stuff working up here. All right, we're getting out the list. Employee evaluations. Bubba's evaluation period's coming up, or in our handbook, we've got a requirement to review annually, written, I went through the manuals, or the employee files, and the last written evaluation on file was 2016 for the road crew supervisor and our secretary, it was done for a zoning inspector or another road crew. Again, this is things, policies, procedures that are not being followed, I think we need to, we have asked Laura for the evaluation template, I made some changes, the front one, I actually created it and put it into Adobe, so it could be filled out electronically, checkboxes, and that, added miscellaneous at the bottom, and also hire date and last review on the front, because that's important. But then I also noticed that at the end, you attest to, this is consistent with the Township's Performance Evaluation System. I couldn't find any information on the system, and then it also says that the employee signs, "The evaluation appeals process has been explained to me." I couldn't find any evaluation appeals process. So I created, the top of the front page is what's in the handbook, I would like to propose language regarding Performance Evaluation System, and then also- And then also explaining the evaluation appeals. Uh, I need to do Bubba's to meet the March first deadline for his evaluation. Uh, I need this approved so we can kind of move forward. I can move forward without it, but I think it's a little unclear what the employees testify. I, I couldn't show them an appeals process because we don't have the stuff I have. Have you had the chance to look at this? I've, I sent this to you.
Yep.
Prior, do you have any questions? I just go snacks over everything like mine. We've got a lot of them. I mean, appeals basically says if the employee believes that inadequate performance evaluation has been rendered, a written response evaluation may be submitted to the board of trustees within ten workdays with a request that be discussed with the board of trustees and will placed in their personal file with the performance evaluation. After discussion, the board of trustees may elect to place their own written response with the employee evaluation. And anything such as if, if the board disagrees with the recommendations for raises or anything, the board approves everything, so that's already automatic. I just want to clarify the appeals process, give them the timeline and, and the, uh, trajectory, how, where that goes. Again, the evaluation system, it just references the employee handbook that ten point one. And explains the primary purpose and what can be done. Supervisor may have employees self-rated in addition to their formal evaluation to aid the evaluator in determining employees' views of their own strengths and weaknesses. Improvements since the previous evaluation and areas to be worked on. The self-rated evaluation shall be attached to standard evaluation, including employee file. Just again, line it out, how we move forward. And I, I think we owe it to our employees, number one, to annually evaluate them in a written way that's conclusive. I'm not sure what, what past practice has been, uh, some, I talked to Bubba and he said that Mr. Carlisle did do evaluations annually, but they're not in the, in the employee file if they were. I don't know how you guys, have you seen any since two thousand sixteen?
He did?
You, he did, or, or you were in charge of the road crew in seventeen and eighteen?
Oh, what?
Or not road crew, zoning and, and secretary supervisor. There is none for zoning.
That's why I had to run, 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 plan, plan.
In two thousand eighteen, but, uh, John Singleton would have had her reviewed then. Uh, now the only, like I said, the super, the secretary, but she doesn't have, and her last was two thousand sixteen. So while you were the supervisor, there, there's no evaluation.
But I think that was, for, did I do one for Laura?
No.
I did one for her.
Two thousand sixteen was the last for.
For her. I lied, I didn't think in there, but.
It's, it's not in there. And that's where I'm saying we.
I did do it as a, as a, I do know that.
Okay. But this is where I think the employees deserve to be evaluated annually so that they can grow, they can let us know what, what their challenges are and we can support. I, we're here to support the employees that support, that do the rest of it. So I just want to make sure that, again, be memorialized. And especially in the report, you're asking the employee to attest that they've been told the appeal process. It didn't appear we have. And I think it should be written so everybody knows. So I, I, I moved to adopt the, uh, performance evaluation system and evaluation appeals as presented. Uh, is there a second? And, I'd like to amend that. And, uh, approve the updated, uh, performance evaluation report format. Is there a second?
A second.
The key seconds, um, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
All right, that's. Uh, road crew hiring, the snow removal update. Um, again, I'll deal with the update first. I received call after call, why haven't my roads been plowed? Why haven't, uh, it's, it was a lot. And I had to explain that, I mean, we go to primaries, secondaries, subdivisions and that. We didn't get to any subdivisions until, I think, the third day was, I think, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Maybe Saturday, and then we started cleaning some up. Um, but again, we were down one.
I didn't everybody.
They might have hit, or then, or Thursday, I think into Friday night and, and Saturday, they hit the subdivisions. Um, but, uh, like I said, we're down, down branded, down experienced guy. We had Wes, Wes there, he did, did great. Um, put a lot of hours in, but he was a new guy. I think he has CDL three days, uh, so he's not moving past that. Uh, there were challenging conditions with the, the ice, the sleet, uh, all that. I got repeated calls about, uh, they were never down, or cul-de-sac, never down the street. But I would go out there and there's push piles back there. The one thing that happened was the road was just a solid layer. So they, during the day, or they put salt on that, people drive and make ruts and make it hard. And they'd come back, scrape that top off. And then it happened day after day. Finally, we got warm enough weather where we could get it out there. Even in our garage yard, Bubba had to get out there with our backhoe and, and bucket and just plow, pick it up, like our plows wouldn't push through. So that was, uh, that's what happened to most places. I did grab our fifty-five hundred, I don't have a CDL, uh, even though we're allowed to as trustees drive with a lot of CDL and the circumstances and conditions, I don't want to be saying, uh, do plan on getting my CDL so I can add, be added to that list. But I did grab the fifty-five hundred one night and clear, went through, uh, what's the one across the old high school? Um,
Willow Brook.
Willow Brook and, and those. I, I couldn't. To our manner. So I, I cleared those, I think it was, uh, Friday night or Saturday, no, Saturday night. Tried to knock some of those things off and that, but that being a smaller truck, I mean, that, that was solid. It was folded every, you know, every, uh, few hundred feet. But I, I do think we need to hire, to get back to what road crew prior were thought sufficient. Uh, Bubba is an employee that if, if it was just him, he would be out there doing it. But we need to support him. We, we had trucks broken down, we had van wells broken, we had trucks stuck. We, we can't operate on the minimum. And that's where, in conjunction with that list, I think we'll be good on big storms. But just operating at all, we need another, another person. And I, I would like to propose hiring that. I, I didn't put this in the format that I did the other, other ones. Um, but we do need that on the back. I, I did total up their hours, like I said, sixty-two hours straight on rotating shifts, twelve hours on, eight hours off. The first day they put in sixty-four and a half hours. Um, and with four guys, that was sixteen hours each. If they would have had that extra guy, it would have been twelve point nine. Now, you might think, oh, it's not a couple hours, but it, it's physical and also mental. You're, you're, you're keeping an eye on those mailboxes and trees and it, it's exhausting. Um, I don't know if you're allowed or not, but, uh, and again, by Saturday, Ethan was just, he had to go home and get rest a little early. And that's a safety issue for pushing our guys that much. Again, we've got breakdowns, we've got, it's, and we're only growing. So I, I really plead with the board that we, we put this out there to hire somebody, preferably with the CDL, uh, if not, train them. But it'd be better with, uh, marking conditions. It's going to be hard to get somebody with a CDL at a decent labor rate. Uh, so we can maybe get someone, uh, there might be some people I could do a part-time or. But we're, we're growing, we're going to have the park, we're going to have other stuff. I mean, we've got maintenance right now. It's not like the guys are sitting around doing nothing, doing nothing. Um, so I, I, I moved that we replace the vacant position uh, that was left by the employee resigning in December and advertise for a full-time road crew employee, um, that to see if, you know, we can bring somebody in and, and give Bubba the support he needs to serve our residents. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. McKee, seconds. This is all discussion.
Um, so we're going to replace the guy we left back in December.
Correct.
Full-time.
Correct.
And then we still going to need an additional employee, is that?
No.
No?
Just, just, we're not asking for an extra one, just to replace them.
All right.
And, and Bubba, is that, that's what you need?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion or? And this, this is a, this is what was placed before, uh, for the ad. I did change it, I put the hours in there, but this is the description that the townships use, use before.
And the job calls changing, that's why. You wanted that CDL for whatever gain you're saying.
Not really.
Do, do you want to change that to possession of valid C, uh, CDL or willingness to acquire one?
That way we can.
At least be ninety-eight period.
Because what pay for, right? I would, would township pay for that person if they don't have the CDL or how does that go?
Bubba?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
First, first test they take.
Okay.
So, we pay for the, if, if the application stuff too, they put in? Or not?
I believe so, I think so.
Okay, so we'll pay for the first written test and the first actual test, right? Or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, I don't think that's written or.
No.
Or, but, and, and we can deal with that for a brief, but we can add for willingness to obtain one within ninety days of.
Well, how, how do they learn that? We work somehow on the ability to, to get one or something like that, to pass the test, something like that.
Uh, yeah, that would need that resolution, remember?
Or, or, or acquire one within ninety days. Because they'd have to pass the test and acquire it.
Well, send the abilities to, I think it helps more than, like if, like, we hire ninety, they're waiting for them to pass it for whatever reason.
Ability to.
Ability to limitations.
Ability to acquire proper CDL within ninety days.
Okay, because they might not be available.
They might not be allowed to have one.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's better, they can't.
And that's where, and that's where writing a driver's abstract, the private personal stuff to.
But you don't advertise that they, you know.
Right.
About the ability to get it.
Okay, so I, I'll move to amend that, um, to include for ability to acquire proper CDL. Um, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. McKee, seconds. And discussion?
Yeah.
We talked about amendment.
Of the amendment, yeah. This is only under that. So no discussion, roll call, please. You want discussion?
And have you reviewed this, Bubba?
I don't think he's reviewed it. This is what we had before when it was put out, I think for Stephen and Ethan.
Same description.
That's a more, that's one more game.
I wonder if there's any differently here with all the stuff we got.
And this is, job, job description does not include all details and provides you with an example of some work duties. So we could, once they come in, we could, Bubba could rule out whatever, how they do lunch runs.
Yeah. Fair.
Um, any other discussion? Now, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Okay, and that was actually only for the amendment of it. So roll call for passing the resolution as amended, or passing the motion as amended to adopt and apply or, uh, seek an additional road crew member.
Yeah.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. McKee, seconds, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Bubba's been very, uh, hot water pressure for the garage wash bay. Uh, I'm new here and I walked back there. And this is what I saw them using to clean the salt off our million dollars of equipment. And it is, it's inadequate, I mean, it's residential version, two gallons per minute. It, it's not getting the salts off, uh, the lines, brake lines are going to rust more, all that. I just want to let you guys know, I, I've contacted several, uh, fridge washer companies. We've had one already, it's actually been up twice reviewing the, the area. Uh, the design of the building isn't ideal. It, if there's some forethought, it would have given a little bit more room and stuff like that. But, uh, I believe we could, we can make it work. I've got another, uh, vendor coming up tomorrow. Uh, once I compile these, I can bring it to the board. Uh, my intention is to apply for this to be paid through the, uh, Gen Z two BIA account. Uh, currently, there's two million dollars in that account that can be used for the benefit of the development area. That's the same account that paid for, uh, some of our trucks and like the, the ditching unit and that. So it, it goes by extension that, uh, you're going to pay for the trucks. You, you can use this, and I, I've talked to Elbers already. And he said that it, that would be approved use because you're, you're using this to pay for that. I think even stuff like, uh, coating the garage floor is paid for through that. So it wouldn't come out of general fund or anything. Uh, I'd still like to present this to the board, the Gen Z board. Uh, but I want to get this together and kind of let you know what I was doing with that. Is there any, any thoughts? It's a heated oil because you need to have grease and that. It, it would be a three thousand PSI four gallon per minute. Uh, you've got, uh, it's better to mount it outside the wash bay so the humidity isn't. But the way, each section is so narrow, they can't really do it. But we could put it right in this bag. And Bubba was, Bubba's fine with that.
Bubba would have to keep it in the hood.
Well, you, you need.
It's going to be the tanking setup though.
Well, it's.
Stables to pace the heat delivery.
I'll send you the thing, but it's a square, it's a rectangular unit.
Yeah.
Self-contained, just needs the gas vented. Uh, so I've, I've got the preliminary estimate. And two, they even have, they were using, uh, just, uh, I mean, they were trying, with four nozzles, trying to get underneath, it had no pressure.
It's gas, like, like.
Natural gas.
Natural gas heated and then it's.
Natural gas and electric pump.
Okay.
Uh, but what they're using now is gas where they actually have to build. So you've got fumes, you've got, it's not effective. Like I said, we've got over a million dollars of equipment and to take care of it properly. And it would be a labor, labor savings. You'd be able to run through that quicker than what they're doing right now. There are some issues, that floor really wasn't installed properly, to have the proper drainage. My employees, they, they've been pushing stuff and, uh, you can't go back to the design.
Yeah, well, we walked, did a walk through the building. That was the first thing when they took us over where they cleaned these, their equipment. I can't believe what I saw.
So if we could put all the passion outside, you could run them, if you run a backhoe or something over to that.
Well, it'd be a hundred foot hose, you could extend it further. And then they could go into the other and wash the floor. So I, I've worked with Bubba, what his needs are. Uh, it, it's too narrow to have like a, a system to keep it on the floor and all that.
Right.
So I'll, I'll put that to the board that we can do that, but I don't carry anywhere.
Correct.
Again, I wanted to support our employees so they can serve our residents. Infrastructure grants, we're talking about economic help in that. There was that Morpsy that I intended, that I believe you had prior commitment. They, uh, Ms. McKee, they indicated a lot of watering superpowers that were out. Have you looked into, did you review that past Zoom and looked into that stuff?
I looked at it, yeah. In fact, I was in a Morpsy with, uh, last Thursday.
Were you proceeding with any of those grants or what's the?
No, I wanted to talk about that because that's some of the things, um, I don't know how to, because I know they had, some of them had a lot of deadline dates on it. So I wanted to start proceeding with some of them.
But you had the, the handout from now, then you could actually watch the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, because that's the stuff, there's money out there. And I mean, like I said, there, there's money to pay up to fifty thousand dollars for road socks. We don't need that to. So we need to, we need to go after that, so I, I was just curious on that. South West Lipton School District, Edna Elementary flashing school sign. I don't see the residents having contact to paint it. But, uh, apparently the, the PTA or PTL, I was in PTA, I'm from Chicago, that's what we say. Uh, has been very, uh, active in requesting a flashing school sign at Columbia and Edna Elementary. Uh, they have a real issue. I think this combined with enforcement. They have a real issue, I think this combined with enforcement would be good. Uh, the school asked us to split the cost with them. They estimate approximately ten thousand dollars total, uh, could be less. Uh, so they're asking for a five, up to five thousand dollar commitment. Again, I've heard from a lot of, a lot of parents in the community concerned about this. I think eventually we should kind of look at safer routes to school sidewalks there, especially if they talk about, uh, cutting busing. Cause they don't have to bust the immediate area of kids, so if they don't, they need to, to walk the stuff. But until that, uh, I, I think this is a, a small way that we can kind of support our community, keep it safer. And, and go forward with that, and especially, uh, like I said, we've been a partner with the school, the Jets and, and, and all that. Uh, I would be for this, like I said, to, to make the community a little safer, especially with kids there with the demand. So I want to, I guess I'll make a motion to enter into an agreement with Southwest looking schools to apply the flashing light, or lights on Columbia for Edna Parkway, or Edna Elementary. Per the estimate provided, not to exceed a full of ten thousand dollars, but five thousand dollars to come from Edna Township. With the Southwest looking School District handling all construction and, uh, payments for that. Is there a second? And it's only for discussion. Is there a second?
Yes.
Ms. McKee, second. Discussion?
Okay, um, the question I had on that is the maintenance. Would we be responsible yearly for the maintenance or?
That would, that would be the school, all we're doing is paying for half the installation, they maintain it.
So we, okay.
They, they install and maintain a lot of the other ones. Uh, I know one of, one of the school findings, one of the main issues now, I just think in life of like, with FedEx, they were included in the Jets, they were, like, this is a small way that we, we can kind of help.
Oh, yeah, I'm not against helping.
And that, yeah, they would, they would be responsible for maintenance.
Okay. Cause I didn't.
I'm going.
Now, is there any other elementary schools in the area that they want the same?
Well, I, I do know that, I think somebody mentioned that, um, the G or flashing lights that they said were ineffective.
Yeah.
I, I do think, cause it, it does, if you, you're going through, you see signs and, you know, may not pay attention, but it's something flashing.
There's no sign on Columbia at all.
There, there are signs, but it's not flashing, it's, if you drive there, it's just, just a little yellow sign and, I mean, that's why there's different stop signs. There are stop signs with LED lights and that, like, and, and that's been the request, I believe, some parents have spoken out in the school board with that. And like I said, they, they requested to go half, have on it. I think it's reasonable, um, again, for the safety of our, our, our residents there, and especially with the increase in truck traffic and, uh, just everything in total. I, I think it's a small investment and to keep it busy. And then as far as, you know, payment, they, they would be correct with it, they would, uh, come back to us and see for reimbursement.
That you came in here for this?
So would you say?
I ask.
Oh.
I, maybe, uh, I don't know what grants are available. I, I was told that there was a safe school, that Edna Township actually has to apply for the safe, safe routes to school grant. And that, do you recall, I was told that the school assisted and Edna applied, but then it was denied. And one thing with grants is you got to write them, you got to show them, you got to, and maybe, I haven't found any information on that. Again, you know, we need better working models for stuff where we can go to and just, okay, here's this. There, like, like I said, there might be a grant available, but for this specific thing, I, I don't know if it's worth the time for a grant or, I don't know. I mean, it's better if you could pay through a grant. I don't know if this is something the BIA could reverse, but saying that it impacts roadways they'll pay for, but school signs for, I mean, commercial doesn't really use school signs. So I don't know if we're getting too far into the gray in that. But again, with, I, I think we're, not to spend money, spend money, but I, I think we're physically healthy enough with, you know, twenty-five, thirty percent payers. That this request isn't extraordinary.
So they listed this board, Edna paid for that, Southwest paid for the sign there?
I'm not sure if they paid for the sign, I'm sure it was probably part of that development, but again, they, they have signs that are not flashing, that they feel is inadequate.
I guess.
The, the parents in the community.
Well, I wonder why they're supposed to come to us?
Well, I, I went to them after several parents and PTO organization reached out to me for a solution because it wasn't being done. And that's when I, I talked to the school, they provided these estimates, Richard Jones, and, uh, he requested that we could split that. I wasn't sure if that was our response to it or not. Uh, our secretary said that we're not responsible for that. However, again, for the community for that, I, that's why I proposed it.
I don't know why they just didn't do it, I guess. No, I, they just didn't go ahead and, and put the sign, it was already that.
Oh, the flashing, maybe funds, maybe, that, I mean, like I said. Well, right, but.
Five hundred thousand, they could break for the bank and consider that, you know, they're invited.
Well, yeah, but if you look at the, even the, the Skanel FedEx, the school was cut out of that jet completely. The, I mean, there's serious funding issues with the schools, especially with the intel, it's going to put even more pressure on that. And again, this serves our, our residents. I, I mean, if you don't think we should do it, I mean, you can vote, vote it down. I'm, I'm just saying, saying that it's not just to spend my own, we could pay for this or not. But, I mean, in, in, in the background, we're, we're paying to have developers on that new road, well, it's, I think this is actually a township benefit use. Uh, cause we, we are, Columbia Road is ours, correct? I mean, we put up stop signs, we put up, we put up signs, we put up.
There's slashers up there.
So whether it's slashers or a sign, that's where you get, kind of get into that, but I, so that's where I'm at, that's why I'm proposing. Is there any other discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Refugee Road, uh, Mink to Edna Parkway, uh, and the memorandum, memo of understanding with Pataskla, uh, the TID, the Transportation Improvement District, Pataskla and the Edna Project. Pataskla is asking us to partner with them, with the TID, to improve the road on Refugee between Mink and Edna Parkway. Uh, right now, the total project is around eleven million, uh, through different funding. The outstanding share is seven million, Pataskla is asking for a fifty-fifty split with Edna Township. The developers, uh, with, I think it's TPA, Jefferies have met with them, they're involved with Ashley Furniture, and they've actually got another client on the, uh, northeast corner of Edna Park, uh, of our corporate park. That's interesting, I believe there's two buildings there, uh, they were, they were close, um, I think giving them a contract. Uh, they said that this, this would be needed to serve not only the clients there now, but also the one that's intended to go there. So I want to bring this to the board because, uh, Pataskla's looking to do a, like, understanding to move forward. They want a commitment, the township, if we're going to do that. If not, they have a backup plan, instead of doing the roundabouts at, at Mink and Refugee and Edna Parkway and Refugee, they're going to scale that back. So they're going to do something, but from what developers say, the task, but I'm, I'm kind of seeing that something's needed there. Now, whether that's a fifty-fifty split or, uh, if they benefit more, they, they already paid for some initial part of that. And that was coming out of their developers and their money. So it wouldn't be a true fifty-fifty split, but if we do this, it would obligate the township, uh, for those, for that cost. And, uh, the hope, the plan would be to reverse it through the jet funds in, in that development. So I want to see if there's interest from this board in, in moving forward. I, I think we should be involved, but again, at low level, maybe not fifty-fifty. I have a product, Pataskla Corporate Park is in north of that, they're going to benefit, I think, most from it. But then also, there's a need for improvement between Edna Parkway and three-ten, which is ours. Our, we, we.
All the hollows.
Not all of it, but Columbia to three-ten, uh, but the three-ten intersection is going to need to be improved. And one of the things I would ask is, are they going to partner with us on that? Because that would be a problem that, you can't just keep them on that level of street, they're going to go to other places, so.
You can't, how it's out here.
Well, but, so eventually that, that's going to need to be addressed. When I talked to Bill Wosher, TID, he's like, we'll worry about that later. To me, you can't worry about stuff later, you've got a plan now and later. Cause if you're going to use all your money in this one here, how are you going to pay for that down there? There's only so much development. So that's a concern of mine, but, I mean, if this is a no-go from you two, I mean, it's dead. But I just want to engage your interest and kind of see how, how order will move forward on this before we have a meeting, and what I have a meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Anything changed in the last couple of months?
Uh, only that there's a perspective that they're going to be closing on that property on the northeast corner. And they have two, two buildings there, so we have that revenue from, from that.
Northeast corner, which is, uh, Edna Parkway and Mink, or Edna Parkway Refugee, correct?
Our. It, it's in the corner.
Our northeast corner?
Right up, right at Mink and.
Edna Parkway, northeast corner. This is our, this is our corporate park, this is our corporate park, it's right here. Not, not, there's one property, some creek or some, I don't remember the name of it, it's not, he's not a park, but there's a side.
But south of Refugee.
South of Refugee, our corporate park, the northeast corner.
Okay. Both sides, Edna Parkway or side? What, northeast, so the all east then?
This is our corporate park, this is Refugee, this is Edna Parkway, it's right here.
Okay.
Ashley's right here, there's that one person that's not part of this, and it's this part. There, that's TPA who's saying this is required, right? For that.
And that, but the southwest.
But then eventually we're going to have to do.
Okay.
It's the southwest corner of the intersection, the right corporate park, that's the northeast.
So, but, so, but they own, their road goes all the way from Edna Parkway all the way to Columbia, correct? Pataskla though?
Pataskla, since.
Yeah, so what is the difference for that?
That's what I, I need to, for when that needs development of our Mink and partner, and then from Columbia to three-ten at that intersection. There's going to be done that.
They told me, I've asked them a question, and they said, oh, no, it's.
That they're not going to be part of that.
Right.
Well, then, then, then that's my discussion with them of how this is going to be handled.
If we talked about it, then you said, they said, well, I said, how do we agree, how do we agree? Three point five million, they want us to put it in the road, and how does that benefit the township really? How do we get that access to township for it? And they, they said, you really can't, so they told me, okay, we can benefit them great, but.
Which I.
Yeah, because, because that gives them access to our Parkway, then they drive down our Parkway too, right forty. Then they can drive down four, then they can drive down our three-ten here, they can, I, our road, we've put all this money, the township money into, and working to, they didn't want to use them, or want us to pay for half of their problem.
Well, I don't, I don't, Ashley, the TPA for the others, said they want access to Refugee. Cause even right now, global, is it global way?
Global.
Ends twenty foot from Refugee, that, that wasn't going to be, that other, the plan prior with Mr. Carlo was, that's not going to be connected until Refugee Road is approved. Cause right now it's just a two.
Exactly, yes.
So, well, my thing is, is there any interest of, if you think it benefits us twenty percent of that, that, okay, go forward, twenty percent, whatever the percentage is, as long as this is also developed. I just need to know if there's any interest whatsoever, or if this is just dead on arrival. And I'm willing to discuss it with them, because I think there is some benefit to us in that, that, that part, uh, but maybe not fifty-fifty. I'm sure they don't like to hear that, uh, but, and, and truly, it's, they've already spent some money, so if you did fifty, it, it's less than fifty-fifty right now, and I can get it right down, but I think maybe even a little bit less, three point five million. That might be a big ask, but, and Jefferies is, is giving some, some of the, the revenues from stuff, and, but again, I don't want to use all the revenues for this, it might be for that.
I guess why, because I was like, we've already said we have the warehouse and the truck traffic there, the else, and I will help them build their road and pay for our funds. That we get from those jets that are out there now, to help them move our trucks through our township.
Well, the.
That's, that's what, to me, it sounds like.
Yeah, well, we've got that other, I mean, this is our corporate park. If, to me, number one, I think the corporate park should probably be near the highway, but that's, we have the best plan, you know, putting here to exchange. But this is where, and there's more, we're dealing, there's breaking ground right now on Mink, for, you know, that's where it's going to be. So the developers are saying they need that for, the rest, to fill out our corporate park, unless you don't want to fill out our corporate park anymore. I, I just, if we're going to put it somewhere, putting it in the corporate park, does that, do we want to not support that corporate park anymore? Any further development in there?
I don't know, I haven't heard about developing the top of the road.
Well, I think the prior plan was to put four corners of that corporate park, that's where we're developing. What's going on?
Northeast corner, yeah, I have a breaking ground for.
No, I'm saying, just whatever, do you not want to develop within the corporate park?
No, I'm saying that's where developers should, that's kind of there.
But that's what the developers are saying, I think, even the ones in our corporate park, say they need that access to Refugee to, cause the lay of the land, I think they, they need to get out there. Coming from Edna Parkway, it, it doesn't fit, fit coming from.
Cause the wetland.
Wetlands and just, so I'm just saying, if, if the board is dead on arrival, they have options, it's not the best options, but even then, Mink is a straight shot up to the intel stuff. Uh, what's going to happen there, what's going, so I think they're, and that's why we need to look at things globally of infrastructure and all that. But right now, they've got a deadline, they've got TID grant, and there's a lot going on this. They actually wanted to do this last year, but they were told no, I was told because of the political pressure, that didn't want to kind of push that with the election. To me, you know, you do what should be done.
I've always been, I've always been against it, cause nobody's been showing how, and that's, that's three point five million.
Well, I'm just telling you that.
Well, nobody's been able to show me that. I mean, show them we're getting the money for that, show me how.
So are you a strict no, like no money, no, not ten percent of it, not twenty?
Until somebody shows me how, I'm going to, I'm going to the township.
Are, are you favorable, do you want more? Like, I, I'm willing to talk more, but again, I don't want to lead them on. Is there looking for a memorandum of understanding to kind of move forward, to get our commitment before they agree to partnership? Cause they don't want to be tied into this agreement when we back out.
Right.
And like I said, I have questions, I, uh, they just got a sewer grant, taking care of most of the sewer line, it benefits us a little bit. You know, to me, it's, it's what's fair for, a lot, a lot of people are looking at Edna right now with all the jets, all the money, like, hey, you've got money to stand on. And no, we need to serve the residents with that, and our needs, but if it benefits us, I think we should move forward, but.
How?
What would be beneficial? I'm sorry, go ahead. The developers in our corporate park say it's needed. So if we want to support our corporate park, if that's where we want to put it, that's fine. If we, if we want to say no more warehouses, we don't get anybody, we don't do it as.
You're selling Ashley and who else is selling that?
Uh, Ashley's TPA, still Jefferies, uh, and that, they, they're dealing with the other ones in the, uh, Pataskla corporate park. And.
Can we talk about Edna?
And Edna one in northeast corner local.
They're not there yet.
They're, I don't know if they said, they said they're, they're close to signing a deal. I, I could talk to them, see if they've signed it, but.
With the jet? For that area?
Isn't a jet in that area in, in, in our corporate park?
Corporate park. Yeah, corporate park.
It would, it would be a jet because.
MIT, cause the land is in there.
It would be, cause he gave projections, I can share with you the projections of the revenue recruit that would pay towards this. It would be, because he gave projections, I could share with you the projections of the revenue recruit that would pay towards this. The amount, the amount of the loan was like, three hundred fifty thousand a year, and that's, and then half that, if they, if we did a half, depending on the prestructure. So it's not an absorbed amount, but it does need to be paid.
I'm going to do the thing, show me how you paid.
Okay, so, I, I, I just want to see.
You need more information, Jeff, is that what you said?
Yeah, oh yeah, because everyone's, that's the first thing, I mean, I had to talk to the gentleman that you guys.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, right, that's why I was pulling this out.
Well, I.
I hear I'm talking tonight, so.
So you, you guys are open to doing this?
More information, I have the information.
I could be paid out of that new development there.
Yeah, I didn't.
Along that, that's a possibility, but I don't feel I have to either that much money.
I didn't want to string along and have them miss deadlines, because, so I'll meet with them on the twenty-fourth.
Totally, thank you, thank you.
All right, and now.
All with entertainment.
And now something that is, nice blessing box, I don't know if she's still here.
Yep, right here.
Oh, yeah. Had a resident reach out to me about a blessing box. Uh, she inquired about, uh, putting in a location. I'm thinking that either this building or the park. I reached out to Mayor Compton about his blessing box, they have it at the admin building, between the admin building and the police station. He just said that it's worked out great, just had to make sure, watch for parish bowls and stuff like that. If someone's going to help maintain it, that's great. We'd have to, maybe talk about the liability stuff and, and that, but. Is that something that this board's interested in, in doing? Because I do think it's a benefit for the community, uh.
Well, they're nice, I mean, they're white.
Do you, do you have a specific box?
Yeah.
You can really make them however you want to make them, you know, they have plans on the Columbus site.
Okay.
But, of course, that, they should.
There's one on Taylor Road that I see it looks like that's, is that what that is?
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't know.
One by Kroger's, actually one on Summit.
Oh, is there?
They've got quite a few, and.
One on Summit, yeah.
I do, I mean, there's pantries, there's things, but.
It's not that big.
Right.
Okay.
I, I think it's for someone who's in need, or desperate, or, you know, whatever, their paycheck to come through, and. It, it's just something to help the community, and I know that was one of the reasons Mr. Carlo indicated of painting trash, because people struggle, pay the food, pay the medicine, pay the. So I think this, if it's properly managed, it would be good. I've seen some, and like I said, we've got to monitor it, where somebody put like frozen hamburger, and then during the summer, it's just. I, I'm just making it clear, making it weatherproof, I, I'd even be willing to help construct it.
Any shade we have.
It was.
Park would be great. Should be something there.
We, we've got that, well, we've got that asphalt pad right here.
Is there shade though?
Is there, we could build, like, I want to see if there's an interest, but into a location, it's a park, you're in charge of parks, to you.
Yeah, well, parking there too, right?
And you have parking right in front, there's an entrance, have you looked at the park at all, or do you think that's a suitable location?
I think it has to be safe in and out too, so that's what I'm thinking about, because people are coming in.
Do you, do you think it would be better out near this building, or better at the park? Is there any concern of people seeing, people use it, or where, if you're at the building, people are like, eh, look, we're at the park, it's a little more discreet?
The one, the ones in Petasola are not discreet, you know, the one by Kroger's out in the local, so I think that can be good if somebody's looking for them. But once we put them, um, I can submit that to the Columbus one, and it'll actually put us on the map.
Put it on that.
So if somebody's looking for us, they can locate that way.
So, I mean, do you, do you want to get more information or approve that?
I, I, I say no, I, I think they're nice, they're nice, they're really nice, they're helpful.
Do you?
I think it's great, appreciate you bringing that too.
I don't want to put this on your roster, but I would be, I'd be, you just take care of it.
I'll get it.
Would you like to do that?
Yes.
All right, so I'll, I'll move for Roslin to, uh, help, uh, as what? Facilitate the installation and management of the blessing box, uh, to be placed in our, uh, so this High Point Park? Uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson, second, it's discussion. I would just say that you, uh, work with, tuning. And, like I said, if you need assistance, I can help with that, so, roll call please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
If you want to give her your information, and I appreciate you bringing it forward, I appreciate you putting it there. All right, getting down there. Annexation, inquiries, the annexation. Disturbingly, I, I found out that there is an outsider of our treatment annexation attempt. Uh, this is some information that I received from a public records request, I, I think it borders you to full information. Some of it, afterwards, the city attorney said might be trade secrets. However, I mean, I asked it in public records request, and that is, uh, that west of the Almond Grove community. There's a portion that is contiguous with Reynoldsburg. However, again, this is outsider annexation agreement. I, I, I feel that, uh, I've learned through this records request that Reynoldsburg mayor and other officials have been meeting with the developer. Uh, I do think that's inappropriate, because we do have an annexation agreement, they, they should have just said no. And leave it up to the developer if they wanted to still file, and then maybe challenge. I do expect that probably would be a challenge coming. I also feel that Reynoldsburg might want to try to get out of the annexation agreement, because, uh, they're looking for revenue sources. I, I don't think they're happy with that, that annexation agreement whatsoever. We need to defend it, they're required to defend it. I spoke to our attorney today, and he's going to reach out to several firms while he handles the jets and that. They're not a litigation firm, uh, they, they're more of a policy setting it up. He had several firms that's going to reach out to, to see if there's any conflicts, but he recommends that we vigorously defend this, uh, and, and state this off. So I wanted to bring this to the attention of the board, uh, and they are planning on two, possibly three warehouses, that they do put that there. Uh, and that's in the documents, I sent you the sign, put it here. Again, I think that's appropriate, being so close to Ballman community. And, uh, this, this just shouldn't, uh, happen. We did, included them in jet one and two, and basically paid them off to not annex us, so only parcels that are approved. The Summit Road, one that they annexed that was within that, this is outside of it. So again, we're going to need to defend this, the, the monies would be paid for through the jets. I, I don't know how vigorously Reynoldsburg would, would try to defend it, but I don't think it's up to them, and they, they would be responsible for every cost. So I think we need to be proactive, uh, so again, our attorney John Alvarez is, is looking into a litigation firm to kind of address this now. I'm not sure if you had a chance to read any more of this, but, uh, and another thing, Reynoldsburg has been a partner with Jets, uh, for a while now. And it was disturbing to hear about this from a third party, not be contacted, and find out that the mayor and others have been actively meeting with them. So I, I would hope that Reynoldsburg would want to continue to be a partner with that now. But again, this may come with litigation. So, does the board have any questions?
Not at this time, I need to redo the, the land they did annex, they planned high density housing on, at apartments.
But that was within the annexation.
That was within the annexation agreement, the land they had available, to annex, do something with it, they chose to do that with it, so.
And that's where I, I, I think the annexation, I mean, luckily, we have that agreement in place that limits them, otherwise they could just steamroll. But I would like to see some limits on what they could rezone as, but we've only, I think, got two more parcels that they could annex, so that would be it.
What do you mean?
Within the agreement, and the only other annexation request has been from Mr. Hakey, for his farm. Uh, I know years ago, he tried to get an annex, I guess he's trying to annex again. It's only been verbal request, but, so he's trying to annex in Reynoldsburg since the referendum rejected that rezoning there. His realtor has reached out to me since, asking if they could, uh, develop them with two hundred homes, and turning the open space over to Edna for a park. Which, to me, that's the plan for residential conservation, just requiring fifty percent, and they need it. So it's almost like they're trying to push that responsibility to the township. So they haven't submitted anything specifically on that, instead they went to Reynoldsburg. Reynoldsburg said they, they really had no interest in doing that, uh, again, it's outside the agreement. But this, this developer might have the money to, to try to fight it, I, I, I think they're trying to blow up the, the annexation. So, again, I just want more to know, if, what other updates from our attorney, I'll let you, let you guys know. Is there any other questions? Okay, last item on this list, a cell phone request by Mrs. McKee. Turn that over to you.
Okay. Well, I'm requesting a cell phone for the state, uh, for my, for my business, for Edna Township, only, just to make it clear and plain. I have a personal cell phone, I have a big family, I have a mother that's ninety-three. I have a ministry, uh, where I deal with a lot of single moms, and my phone is used for that purpose, so I have a lot of information going to come from my phone. So I am requesting a, uh, cell phone be paid for by the township, for township business only.
Do you have any policy proposal, or?
I, I don't need, what do you mean a policy proposal?
Wait, you, you brought this, and, or since you asked me to put it on the agenda. Here's policies for four townships covering, uh, cell phones, uh, either, uh, an allowance for, or a provision for providing a cell phone and plan. I think if we're going to consider it, that, that we should have a policy in place that, that dictates things such as uses, costs, I, I mean. Some allow personal use on there, as long as it doesn't interfere with business, some, no personal whatsoever. Also, I mean, if you just go for allocations, say sixty bucks a month, that actually becomes taxable. And I think we should have a policy dictating how public records are handled, uh, because, you know, definitely on, on a cell phone provided by the township.
Exactly.
It is, but also personal cell phones, any text or call logs or anything done for person, or township business is also, uh, a record that must be maintained. And that's one of the things that I think we're, we're not maintaining right now. But aside from your request, I think if we are going to move forward with it, I hope that you would, would provide a policy, but again, here's four from neighboring townships and.
Well, I didn't provide a policy, but I know that, um, other townships do, um.
Correct.
Get, and that's what this gets.
Every township that I, I've seen, and again, it just goes to proper administration, that if you're going to do something, you should have policies and procedures in place that explain what it is, how things are handled. If, if you've damaged the phone through neglect on personal time, who's responsible for, for that repair? Those should, should be listed, listed, so I don't know if you want to review these and maybe find out more.
I can give, I mean, if that makes it, if that, if that's not a problem at all, Mark, if that's makes it.
Why'd you think that?
Transparent to the, uh, township residents, that's not a problem at all. I worked in state government for thirty-one years, I, I have, I have state phone, and I know how to handle a phone under government, what's, what's required to have a phone. So I'm pretty good at knowing the proper, proper and procedures as far as having a personal, I mean, a phone that's for the townships, use only. So I think you're reading too much into it, Mark, it's not, it doesn't.
No.
Yeah, I mean, because when you buy a phone, it's like, most people have cell phones, and you can either buy, choose to purchase the insurance from the provider, or not to purchase the insurance. Which if I broke it, they will replace it for a fee, um, or repair it for a fee. So it's not, it's not that, it's not that difficult, yeah.
There, I, I, I went.
It'll go back, it'll go back to what I was saying, we'll just, you know, um, it's for the township use only.
Now, I would just.
And it wouldn't be for any personal use.
Well, I, I would disagree that Colrain Township's cell phone communication policy is five pages.
Okay.
There, again, what's the policy of what type of phone are we going to allow?
I'll take a flip phone.
No, no, but that's where the policy, what, are we going to allow someone to have the latest?
I'll take the most inexpensive phone.
Just making, please. This, this is the proper administration of any organization, you have policies and procedures in place, unlike this, this is not extra, extraordinary. Every township has, as I even reached out to Orange Township, and they're in the middle of creating a township policy, and they're running it by label. It's, it's a serious matter, and again, we need these procedures in place, because you can't just say, well, I know how to use a cell phone. Ms. McKee, please let me finish. I know how to use a cell phone, but again, uh, are, who's, who's paying for the plan, is insurance required? If it's reversed, is insurance required, who's responsible for damage? It, that's, again, it's very simple, and I, all I would ask is, and I would support it, we need a policy, if we're going to move forward on that, we can't just say, we're going to have a cell phone, and, and that's it. So, I, I think it's a reasonable request, every township does it.
We can put a policy in place, but it doesn't take up, this is, how many pages here?
Five.
Yeah, is it five? It looks like it's a little bit more than that.
There's four, there's four, I, I took fifteen.
Oh, you got different ones, stapled together, okay, I'm different, okay.
Again, I tried to do some due diligence, when I knew you wanted this on, on this thing, I, I was hoping, like I said, what, what I would ask the board to do is, if you, if you want to propose something, come prepared, so we can discuss it. And I, I did have the policy, and this should be within the employee manual and that, when we update it, but outside of that, I think we need a policy to, to proceed, so I would ask that, if you want to bring back the policy.
That's fair.
Or you can make a motion to just pay for it, and we can vote.
Well, I'm not going to pay for it, but I'm going to make a motion for us, for the township to pay for it, that's what I was coming in today.
Are you making a motion?
For the township to pay for it.
We have a cell phone.
She made a motion, uh, for the township to pay for her cell phone. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Mr. Johnson, second, it's discussion.
We have, we've had township cell phones before.
Do you remember about that?
Yeah, I think Smitty was the last one to have it.
Yeah, he was, you go, what, there was a policy on that, did you follow it, or just, they're just handed to you? And you pay nowhere, you pay, they'll get reversed, you remember?
Oh, township paid for, they watered it up, they had, not just the air, if you had a problem with, like you think you have it.
Well, you didn't even submit the bill of business, or was that what you would do?
Uh, yeah, I've set up all, I just paid it as I got it, and nothing, nothing on the Smitty program, so.
Okay, all right. Because I knew we had cell phones in the township one time. I mean, I don't, for a visiting, reason why not, you, also, we've got it. If you're asking, then if we can.
You want to move forward without an actual policy in place before, my suggestion would be, create the policy, and then do the action. We're, we're doing it opposite. What, what if there's charges incurred that are outside of extraordinary things, what if?
What if, what if?
Who's responsible for?
Well, I'm just saying, okay, so how will they get a policy together?
I've got four, I did.
You want a?
Four.
Policy right now?
Yeah, I didn't know. I don't, I don't think they're adapted to us and the language, and, is there that much of a rush?
Yeah, well, it's, it's a budget.
She wants one now.
I want a phone, because I'm like, these are my, my personal policy, I mean, I, I just, no, I just. Well, I'll pay for the print and a lot of other things, but I just don't feel that I, you know.
Mark, tell me how, entertain all your own questions.
Yes, I mean, well, so.
Well, I was prepared, I, I really, I did my due diligence. One, at the time, was if you want, he asked me a question. I was prepared with all my motions, all my documentation, all, I even sent it to you ahead of time, hoping you guys would review it.
Uh, I didn't get that.
Ms. McKee? No, not this, because I thought you, you were going to propose your own.
No.
Again, I, I, I think that's, that should be done.
I didn't think there was a need for it, right, I just really did, right, I'm coming out, I just thought, we, we say we'll pay for it, yeah, by the township. coming out. I just thought if we say we'll pay for it by the township, if it gets passed, then we could work on paying, putting together a, yeah, that's the first thing first, making sure you guys would agree to get paid, pay for it. Okay? Once it was agreed upon, now we can, there's a policy proceeding place, we can do that, it's no problem. I have a thing to hide.
I, I don't know what the discussion on hiding, but I'm, please, I didn't interrupt you. I think it's backwards if you're going to approve the purchase of a cellphone without having a policy in place.
I'm sorry, that's what you feel, Mark.
Mrs. McKee, please. Every other township has it. It's part of proper administration. It's, again, we got to get away from how this township has been operated previously because we've had major issues. It's the same as the fireworks. It's, I don't think there's any immediate need, my phone and most plans have unlimited minutes right now. You're not charged per text, you're not charged-
You're not, my phone is not going to be a part of the township. It's my personal phone, I pay that bill.
Please, you'll have an opportunity to speak when I'm done. I think it's proper to do this, you know my views. There's no immediate need for this. So I would say that Mrs. McKee should go and propose a policy that we can approve, and then we can move forward with cellphones. And then we could also address other employees, I'm not sure how Bubba feels, or, I'm fine using mine, I've used my phone number, I can actually add a second number here and keep everything separate.
That's what you want to do, Mark, that's fine, that's fine. But I don't. And again, I just want to make sure that we're going to pass it to say that we will, if we, the township will pay for me if I'm for township business only. Yes, we can work on a policy. That's, if that's what we need, it's not a problem, but I want to make sure that gets passed. And that's what I brought to the table tonight, that's why they have a policy in place.
Policy should come first.
Well, no, I don't, I don't agree with you on that, Mark.
I don't. Please, keep comments down. All right, any other discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, personally, I think it's, if we do this in haste, you, you want to look at a five-page document and say, okay, we'll take this. Again, Orange Township is running their cellphone policy through legal and trying to get it fixed. I don't think, I think it would be careless to just say, let's just use this. I just pulled these four off the internet. I Googled cellphone policy township, and these came up. I specifically asked Orange Township, or actually, I think, well, maybe one, please. So these may not be the best, they may not even be relevant in some sections, but I don't think, we've got another meeting on March 1st. I don't see why, at that time, it wouldn't give you ample time to-
No.
Propose a policy, and we move forward, we can even call a special meeting. I just don't understand the rush of it. And again-
It's not a rush, it's just what I want to get, it's not a rush. I have it on the agenda, this is not a rush. But I want to say this, I noticed you said you Googled it, and that's fine, you Googled the other policies and things from other townships, I get it, and you adapt, and you basically copied and pasted the ad on it. So that's what I needed to, you know, because that's what I saw you did on that other, that you passed here, and I noticed it. And I asked you, did it come from Liberty? And it is regarding the social media page.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you don't reinvent the wheel, but you do, please.
I'd say correct.
You do, just like the mailbox policy, that was pulled for probably about ten different ones.
Yes.
We're not reinventing anything here. So you use what other people have created and adapted. It's not just find and replace Liberty with Edna, but there's specific things in there that don't apply, that references to our employee handbook, like that aren't in there. So again, I would hope that you would come with a policy, and I would have supported that. However, I don't think it's appropriate just to use these that are unedited and unreviewed to say, let's just pass it and get your cellphone now instead of in two weeks.
You know what? We can still pass it and then do the policy, because I won't, I may not have a phone in a week. We can still put the policy together, that's not a problem.
But what's the benefit?
But I just want to make sure that it gets passed.
Are you looking for reimbursement? Or are you looking for the township to do, pay the whole bill?
No, I just hand the bill over to Julie every month and say, here's the bill, pay back, pay, that's it.
Why would you hand the bills over, the bills to the township?
So whatever way it goes. Mark, come on, that, you're going too far, doesn't matter. I'm just making it so it can be understood.
It would come here, it would come here.
Yeah, exactly.
So the bill will come here, not you and your guys reimburse what you're asking for?
Correct.
And to pay from them.
But what level phone do you set? What expense do you set? Is it, is it a new phone every year, a new model comes out? I think those things need to be addressed, and-
You don't plan with it, so what's available plans?
You can get any phone you want. My phone, my current phone costs 1,200 bucks, 1,200 bucks.
I don't need a phone that expensive.
I was thinking that we, I was thinking more of a monthly reimbursement type, maybe true. Only because you could add that over your plan, but it wouldn't be a township phone, I guess, than let it be strictly your phone.
Or then it would become pink home.
Correct. We don't want to, never get that, I don't like that idea.
But that's what I'm saying, have a policy in place thoroughly vetting it, instead of just gut reaction, let's just get a phone. Again, I don't think it's an urgent, emergency issue, unless you're going to lose service by the time you decide this, I really think. You know what I'm saying, I think policy before phone, to answer those questions, because can you upgrade every year?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. And those things need to be addressed in there.
They address them, no, at least, they upgrades on everything?
Can't we just-
Can't you get his way?
I just-
No, can't we just have a proper policy in place before we act, is what I'm saying? You know how I feel. Is there any other discussion?
I don't know. I think we should, I think we should get her, she wants the money, we should be able to have her have phone. The question is, the timing on it.
I have no problem with providing a phone, I just think we should have a policy in place. And I would hope, if we have a policy in place, she would recommend this upon.
That's not your call, Mark. That's not your call.
So you're saying, according to your vote, you should get your vote taken.
If the board passes a policy, that would provide for a phone for her. So it wouldn't even need a separate vote, because most policies indicate, who, like page two here, township administrator, township assistant, there are a lot of these sort of items, maybe Bubba, maybe, so it could be trustees, so that would be handled in the policy. Again, it's not about me getting, I'm just trying to ensure we have proper administration of this township. This is beyond basic. So, is there any other discussion?
So, you're saying, next meeting?
Is the first. We can hold a special meeting if you want. I would just have-
Or schedule a whole special meeting, like for anything else, though.
But if it's that important, I'm willing to come in here for a special meeting for something. I would just request that Mrs. McKee presents a policy, or me, I can present the policy.
No, I don't think that.
So if there's a motion on the floor right now to simply purchase a cellphone for Mrs. McKee, that would be an absolute policy. Is there any other discussion?
So would you, so would you, you want to get a policy together?
Yeah, we need a special meeting. So we can do a special meeting in a couple days. I got a policy tomorrow if you want to.
All right, I'll do a special meeting.
I'll be on Townhurst for like Monday after today, but-
I mean, is this that urgent that we need a special meeting?
So we get to do a special meeting for Monday, is that okay, Jeff? Can I hear Monday?
I'll be back Monday, yes.
Can we just do this during regular meeting?
We do a special meeting Monday.
She gets, she wants it now. She gets a policy together, Mark, and we adopt the policy, then she'll get it done.
Right, but I'm saying it-
So we can do a special meeting on Monday, is that going to be too much for you, Jeff?
Well, the president calls special meetings.
Okay.
But you could request, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with a special meeting, but again, I don't think it's that urgent, but is there any further discussion?
Sorry, you don't want a special meeting?
I'll be, I'll draw my cell phone.
You're going to withdraw your second one? All right. Is there a further second? There being no further second, the motion has-
Seconded what?
On your motion to purchase a phone.
Oh, I'm seconding it.
You proposed it, it's not through mine, so the motion, the motion's dead.
So you'll, you better calm down, because you just, you just get too excited, and you just, you don't have to do that.
I'm explaining the procedures.
No, you're, it's, it's not that.
All right. Any other details? Announcements and trustee comments.
Are we allowed to make comments?
Yes.
To? Thank you. I've been here for three and a half hours, and all I see is three people bickering back and forth. Nobody wants to give at all, any of the three of you. Three and a half hours of this bull. You say stuff, Mark, Jeff disagrees, and you think you run it. Mrs. McKee says something, and if she says something, and if you're already talking, you say they're interrupting, but you do the same, so does Jeff's, and so do you. You guys need to calm down and work for our township.
That's what I said.
Put your thoughts together, not pull apart.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I do.
And I mean that seriously. Thank you for coming up and speaking, and I'm going to do my best to work with these other trustees, because we are supposed to be a team, it's not one person with more power. We all have the same power, but we have to realize that.
Okay, then. Yes, quickly, thank you. Your name and address, please.
Aaron Young, 91, 67 Keller Road, Southwest Reynoldsburg. God bless this meeting, that's what we need. You guys are doing a great job. This is how government works, folks, it's not this, but, this is how government works. This township, everybody disagreeing? That's what we need. We don't need one person making all the decisions. However, I do agree that we want to hold our elected officials accountable. No one's being targeted, we're just holding people accountable, just like we do in our own businesses. We have a policy, and then we work off the policy.
Thank you. I just like to say, I mean, I'm just trying to do what's right here. Like I said, proper administration, this township has been my belt for the last two years, and I'm going to continue to fight with that, hopefully working with others, but I'm going to be adamant about, you know, we do a problem.
Yeah, but you have to treat your other colleagues with respect, Mark. I understand that. I'm a resident too. I am. Mark, you're all residents here, and we still have to work together and get along and respect each other, because your body language says a lot. When you talk, you talk to Jeff, you don't talk to me. In a scene, they can see it. You have your shared turn towards Jeff, and you speak to him. I'm a trustee too. You know, I just, just today, when you walk in, I speak to you, Mark. You have just totally just, so I don't know. I mean, if there's something you want to bring up or talk about, I think you should.
What if you read range?
I believe, well, we did the rationale of this meeting, and we could do-
But I just wanted to put that out there, but thank you.
We can, we could deal with this stuff, but trustee comments, I had a comment about business cards to the boards. We've got new members, I printed some out of my funds temporarily for the fiscal officer and two new trustees. We need to order some more. I believe that we need to make a change from the prior one. You can't even read that it's, that logo is so small. So I'd like to redesign it and submit that order. I don't know if the board's fine with what I've redesigned, but I think the logo should be, should be bigger, because again, it doesn't need to say Edna, and the current logo is so tiny that most people have seen it, can't even tell it's Edna. So, you guys be okay with that?
I'd say maybe we can.
Oh, I could forward to, I mean, you see it, if I put the cards right out there, I'll do that. For Julie, I think Roslin took the rest of that and put it up there. But like I said, I did that, and I printed those temporarily because we didn't have cards, we had that Township Association to try to support the new trustee and I, you know, while we're meeting other individuals, I thought we needed a card. So that, and then the other thing is, this township loves boxes. There's TV boxes, computer boxes, and all that. Can I dispose of those? Does anybody have an issue with cleaning that up? Some of them we've had for years.
Or, I know there's TV box.
The TV boxes, the laptop boxes, there's six of them, there's boxes, and there's no need to retain these electronic device boxes for, for years. We can photograph the information on the side, save it, and get rid of them. It just, to me, we need to kind of clean it up, and there's no reason to do that. I'd also like to get the records moved out there, finish that, and like I said, it's just cluttered.
Oh, the TV box.
The TV box, all the boxes in that side-
Those boxes, you have to send one back, somehow you have to send one, the laptop back.
But then get another box. It's been over a year, usually electronics stay on. Well, why say one minute?
They pack, it's a break, you send it back.
So you're saying-
I don't know why we keep six, but I know we kept, we're keeping one just for that reason possibly, but it's been, I guess, what, almost a year now?
Well, I probably, I thought it would be good to throw away, but I didn't want to do it. Mrs. McKee, any opinion on the boxes?
That's, it's irrelevant, honestly.
Okay, that's what I thought, I wanted to let you know. So that's all the comments I have. Mr. Johnson, do you have any comments?
No.
Mrs. McKee, do you have any comments?
No.
All right, the motion, we did all the bills, and so now, I move to go into executive session under O R C 121.22 G1 to consider the employment, employment dismissal, dispassion, promotion, demotion for compensation of public employee or official, actually two members, and for investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensed or currently individual, actually two individuals there. And then under O R C 121.22 G6, details relative to security arrangements of emergency response protocols for a public body or public office, if disclosure of matters discussed could reasonably be expected to jeopardize the security of the public body or public office. Do I have a second? This is employment, appointment, and security matters. Is there a second?
One minute.
Appointment, employment, and security matters.
All right, I'll second.
Mr. Johnson seconds, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. McKee?
Yes.
Time is 9:28, entering executive session. We'll try to make this as great as possible. And snacks are over there. I keep saying Taco Tuesday, I have a taco truck out.
Ooh, this thing's about dead.
Oh, okay, how was it?
It was good.
All right, ready to go? I make a motion to leave executive session, return to regular session. Is there a second?
Second.
Good. Okay, Mrs. McKee, seconds. Roll call, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Evans, yes. Mrs. McKee?
Yes.
Yes, pass, it is 10:03. I move to adjourn. Is there a second? Mrs. McKee, seconds. Roll call, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Evans, yes. Mrs. McKee?
Yes.
And that is 10:04 P M. Questions from the press? Or arrest of any, we could do questions and arrests, whatever you want to go for.